Call this regular meeting council.
Depends what you want to consider. Cancel the first ones who are called in a special.
It's a, this is a regular meeting council. Yeah, I'll call this regular meeting council to order for Monday, September 19th, 2016. And the first thing is the purpose of the agenda. Secretary. Counselor Mackay. All in favor? The adoption of minutes for September 6th, 2016, for your remaining council. Counselor Casey.
I'd recommend that council adopt the minutes for the September 6th, 2016. Regular council meeting as presented.
Daryl. All in favor? Any questions? Daryl.
Thank you, worship. Just have a couple of things. Just to Mr. Wall in regards to 8.4 Tumble Ridge brand. My apologies, I didn't come in and see it. Discussions with Counselor Kirby was, there's a discussion with regards to some of the pitches that were put up on our delegation there, and one of them was the welcome Tumble Ridge sign. I asked her if that's kind of what the plan was with this branding thing, and she confirmed with me that it is. And I just want to be, just be clearly on if that's the case or not the case.
Mr. Wall.
Thank you, Counselor Grubel. So the plan is to have a new entrance sign to Tumble Ridge. Like, that's something we've talked about. Now, what was put in front of council was just an example of something that could happen. The sign is going to be coming back to council during the budgetary period. So is that an example of what the sign would look like? It possibly could be, but there's been no decisions made on that.
And just one other thing, related covering here, but somewhat is, when it's to council, how he talks about the windmill traffic coming, being done soon. I'm just wondering about the windmill blade that was discussed around the chambers here.
Yes. Yeah, so the two contractors that were taking care of that, GE and Pattern Energy, have decided for whatever reason that they don't want to give the blade to the district. So why that changed, I'm not sure, but there's some concerns about liabilities or something, and some costs which we thought was going to be more by them, but they decided it was not going to be more by them. So at the end of the day, they've taken that blade and they're shipping it back to Hinton for disposal.
Just on a good spot, worship. Wall. Okay. Over on the sample summary sheet, page 15. Mr. Wall.
Just to update on the boarded up businesses. Shell, a company on behalf of the owners has approached us to get a permit, a demolition permit, to take out those tanks. And we've put a stop work order on that permit until they come in and talk to us about what they're doing with that business, what the overall plans are. Hoping that they will come in and get the message, because when we initially were speaking with them, we said, okay, yeah, we'll give this to you, but we want to talk to you about what your plans are. And they never got back to us, never communicated with us. So we have to put a stop work order on it until they come and tell us what their plan to do with that site as a whole. And that'll give us a chance to talk to them about the boarded up businesses. But as of yet, that has not enticed them to come speak to us, so we're just waiting.
Counselor Scott.
With the stop work on those tanks, I'm just wondering if it doesn't get rectified, like if they don't come and see us, can they possibly turn around and say because of the stop work that there's additional leakage and stuff like that? Liability and just throwing that out there.
Mr. Wall.
Uh, no, I mean, those tanks have been in the ground for however many years. To be able to prove that the district was the cause of the leakage at this point, I don't see how that can be argued.
And it's also their choice to come to a reading here and get the, get the work to go ahead. All we, all we don't do is talk to them. So it's still their choice of how long this could take.
And I haven't asked them to appear, appear in front of council in public to put their records on in public. I'm just asking them to come talk to me so we know what's going on with that site. And they seemed very concerned when I told them that I'm going to put a stop work order on it, but as of yet, they haven't contacted us.
Is okay with everything else on there? Okay, we have no petitions or allegations. It's just a correspondence, and that's the Northern B.C. Tourism Summit. October 3rd and 4th. Kind of a very short notice, I would say. But it, it is one thing that I think it's important for Tumble Ridge. We're trying to get into this tourism game. We want to be a big player up in this area. And I, for one, would like to attend this. Got an email from Joanne. I don't think she's that excited about it. So I would ask for counsel to cover my costs to go to this. Any other discussion on? Daryl.
Thank you, worship. I don't have no problem voting in favor of that, but what about the stop hanging on going down the door? Is there any go up, sir?
Mr. Wall. We'll have no staff available to attend this here.
Uh, one thing that is going to be at this is, yeah, because Israel Canada is going to be there. So I think Tumble Ridge is a great spot for the recent set. I sure like to tell them that face to face. So I guess I made a motion. You get a second or not?
Sure.
Counselor Mackay. Any more discussion on? All in favor? And second one, 6.2, San Diego City. Information is discussion.
Information, worship, for me.
Okay. Second there. Counselor Scott, all in favor? Okay, and then bylaws. Bylaw number 642, 2016, a permissive tax exemption. We've got recommendations there. Got to get a recommendation. Counselor Mackay.
Recommend the council give the first reading to the District of Tumble Ridge Permissive Tax Exemption Bylaw Number 642, 2016.
Second for that? Any discussion on? All in favor? Second recommendation? Counselor Scott.
The council gives second reading to District of Tumble Ridge Permissive Tax Exemption Bylaw Number 642, 2016.
Secretary Daryl. New discussion? All in favor? And the third one? Counselor Casey.
The council give third reading to District of Tumble Ridge Permissive Tax Exemption Bylaw Number 642, 2016.
Daryl. All in favor? Okay. New business. Geotactic of both the north and east side of Guillem Crescent, Secumplace and Wapiti areas. Have a recommendation there? Put up. Counselor Ha.
So for discussion on that, I'd like to, that we kind of narrow in on the properties that you're talking about, because you're, you're painting Guillem, the east side of Guillem Crescent with a broad brush there, whereas there hasn't been any water issues on the side of Guillem that I live on, which is 240, 240, 244. And we've, we've done testing with the District of Tumble Ridge back in 2002 before I purchased those lots. So there was no groundwater seepage or issues on those lots at that time that were sold to us by the District of Tumble Ridge. So if there is an area, and I, I understand the concern that we don't want to dig into the bank, but I'd like it defined a little tighter, so staff could tell us where exactly the area is where people are, were digging into the bank. If we could get that defined by the house numbers, that's kind of what I'm looking for before we label everybody on both Crescent and Wapiti.
Mr. Wall.
So the immediate issues are from, sorry, house, basically 192 West. So those are where the immediate problems are, but there is concern long-term on problems. So there, there aren't, at this moment, no concerns with 192 East until you get over to the Wapiti area. But having said that, long-term, things can change, and stuff that's done now can affect the future as well. So the immediate concern is 192 West when you get over onto Wapiti. So there is that half a section of Guillem that isn't an issue right now, but that can change in the future.
Counselor Ha.
So again, when we're talking 192 West, between 108 and 112, there's a roadway that's been left for future development or future expansion. So that point there, we should assume that we'd be building houses there at some point. And if we can't allow people to build garages or, or anything over there, why would we have a road left open that we can continue to build on? So there has to be some, somewhere further down to the west of Guillem that has to end it. For example, you're talking west, that's 104. 104 is still west, but it's on the corner of Babcock and, and Guillem. Is that house affected in this as well?
So one of the reasons we've run into this issue in the first place is that when Tumble Ridge was built and actually brought them here, there was a bunch of geotechnical reports that were done all over town. And what these reports said was, the area that was developed up here in the first place was a bad idea to develop because these problems could exist. And at some point, whether, I, I'm not sure who, but at some point in history, they decided to allow that development to go. So our recommendation where that road is going is that we shouldn't be developing up there, because this, these reports are telling us it's a bad idea, and developing where they told us was a bad idea in the first place is what led to these issues. So could that area be developed? Yes. Would we recommend that it's developed? No, because of those. And so could those, again, right now, defining the difference between what are we having an issue with right now, and what could we possibly have issues with in the future? You know, we're painting with that broad brush because there's potential for issues on all of those areas in the future, but right now, it's limited to what I was saying on 192 over to the west when you're getting to the, the end of Guillem there. And even, what is, what's the street there? When you go on the corner and then Guillem comes around like that?
Babcock.
Yeah, even some of the streets or houses over there are running issues as well. So that whole side, we're saying right now is a problem. And then when you're getting to the east side of 192, going down the slope, there's no issues today, but there could be in the future. And then when you get into Wapiti, there are issues right now.
And so, so the moratorium that we're going to put on, in place, is that nobody is allowed to develop garages in their backyard, basically. You can't do any excavation in your backyard.
Mr. Wall.
No, you can't dig into any natural, it says they're natural foliage banks, so any natural bank that you have in your backyard, so if you've got a slope in there, you can't dig in there and, and put anything in there. If you've got a flat spot on your backyard, then you, you'll be good to go.
Another question, is, is there any concern now about us imposing this, about property values for the people in that area?
Mr. Wall.
It could possibly affect it, but as the municipality, we have the right to legislate what people are allowed to do on their property and what people aren't allowed to do on their property for the, the benefit of the, the community. So do we have to worry about that from a legal standpoint? No, we, we restrict what people are allowed to do in their area all the time. But would the residents have concern? It's, yeah, it's possible that they would be concerned about this.
I, I've got some history on this, and back, back in early 2000s, I would call up to our residents up there, and actually called the mayor to go up with me. And there was actually a stream running through one of the basements. And the whole cause of that stream was their neighbor had dug into, into the back and just changed the direction that a spring was running off. And at the time, I mean, I said, I thought to myself, well, the storm sewer had ran out that way. As soon as you do that, as soon as we do that, we are liable, the district is liable for, for anything that happens up there. So my, my view on this is that we are here sitting in this, to protect this district from being liable for anything, any cost. And I think it's pretty well dictates how we got to vote on this myself. So that's, that's where I, that's where I come from. I, back then, we backed off as the council, the days that we're going to do it. And I really hope that this council looks at it the same way. Stop.
Yeah, and I, I'm not disagreeing with you at all. I, I agree with what you're saying. I, I just like it defined. I don't like the loosey-gooseyness of it, of the western side of Tumble Ridge. To me, that, it, it's too loose. Define the properties that you're talking about. Are we talking about, because now we've just started talking about Babcock. Babcock is not in this recommendation. So if Babcock is in it, define the recommendation, so we don't run into the same issue that we ran into with the paving path going down, past towards the golf course, right? If we have a defined start point, a defined end point, this is the area we're concerned about, we're not going to do any more development. You've got a house number on this side, and a house number on this side. Because if someone comes in next week from 108 Hanbrook Lane, what are we going to say to them? Well, you, are you on the west side or not? How can you say that they are or they aren't? We've already started to include Babcock tonight. Are we just talking about Guillem, or are we now talking about Babcock? That's why I'm looking for definition before we go on. Got no problem voting on it? Don't want to put the district in any liability either? Define the area we're talking about.
Okay, Counselor Scott.
And is it just the one side, like the single side of Guillem? Or are the houses across the street affected as well?
Mr. Wall.
So the houses across the street can be affected. And then when we're talking about Babcock, what I'm talking about, they're suffering some of the effects, but there's no issues with anybody on Babcock developing retaining walls, because that's not the way the water's coming. We're just talking about that sloped area down there. So just, council's got a couple of options. I, I'd say staff is comfortable with the recommendation that we have right now. If council's not comfortable with the recommendation right now, you can, well, nobody's made a, a motion right now, so you can just leave it. If you are comfortable, you can make and pass the motion. And if we don't, then it would come back to staff and we would look to, to make a change to it and bring it back in front of council at the next meeting.
Does anybody feel comfortable about putting the recommendation? All right, I have a recommendation.
Worship, I'll put the recommendation on the floor as it stands.
Okay. Second for that? Counselor Mackay. Any more discussion on that? Counselor Mackay.
I'm just wondering if, on those reports, if it does mention those other areas? The, the reports that you have going back, it looks like some time. Were those areas pointed out in that?
Which, which areas are you talking about?
Uh, well, we, we named a couple of other streets there that worked in this here, or were. Is this, uh, is this report limited to the information you have right there on, coming from, I don't know if it was Urban Systems or whoever that was, but?
So the, this geotechnical from Harter is limited to this specific issue. This is dealing with this specific issue. These old reports that we've got right here, these are the geotechnical information for all the different developed areas for Tumble Ridge. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, worship.
Counselor Scott.
I'm kind of in agreeance with Counselor Ha. I think we need clear definition of all of the properties. And then I do have one other question about the OCP. I know there were green belts previously in our original OCP that were established when the town was first built. And then on this, the one that we're running under right now that's coming up due for renewal, I think they changed some of the green belts. So was this area changed at that point as well? For, for the development?
Mr. Wall.
I'm not aware.
Counselor Scott.
Yeah. Thank you, worship. So I have a couple of things. I think it comes up later in the agenda, but I'm remembering it now because I kind of have something to do with it. In regards to lot expansions, and I know it is coming up later, but we sat here with meetings in regards to Urban Systems, and none of these reports were ever supplied in regards to the geologic findings and stuff like that when that was discussed. There's no reports there. Urban Systems didn't even bring it forward to us. My fault as counsel, obviously, I should have been looking for, for stuff like that, but it was never brought up. So that two meetings in Urban Systems in regards to lot expansion, and one of those areas was talked in about behind Guillem Crescent because of the green space that was available back there. None of that information was ever brought forward. So I'm not sure.
Mr. Wall.
I, I don't believe, this report that we have here was done by Harter, it wasn't done by Urban Systems. And all of the original geotechno, I mean, these are from, this is, this is from, Tumble Ridge was built 1983, 1983. So it's, it's very possible that Urban Systems just never dealt with these issues before.
Yeah, I think they, sorry, worship, I don't think they have, but I'm just thinking when we know these folks are coming forward, they know, we know what kind of path council's been talking about in these meetings, or these committees. You would think those reports would be supplied to us, they're already aware. Maybe we could have asked some of those, expect, possible expansions, leaving that part of the discussion log. And this, Mr. Wall, it's not your fault, I'm just, we're just hoping that that stuff's more readily available when we have these things, because it's going to come up later in the same aspect of not giving that expansion on certain areas back there. And just on that, on, in regards to, to the same things, I think it defined more. So you're saying Babcock, no issue, but they see some issues, and other people work on lots in regards? Is that what you had mentioned, Mr. Wall?
Mr. Wall.
So yeah, the, if you're, the, on the Guillem, the road, the, the slope is going down, right? And so the water will run down and it'll go across the street onto the houses over there. So there's no issues with, it's like this, right? There's no issues over here with building retaining, there's, there's no need. It's, it's flat, it's just the water that's running down up there. So there's no need to put a, a stop, anybody over here doing it, it's the, it's the area here. Does that make sense?
So that's on the opposite side of Guillem we're talking?
The opposite side of Guillem, or what?
So the odd side. See, we're, we're saying nothing to me, like, that's why I'm looking for definition or defining more. So the way Guillem runs down, it obviously runs all around. I've been out there and it slopes down towards Babcock. So they have no issues if they're to dig in their yard and put a garage back there for retaining walls?
On Babcock?
On Babcock. So 1, 140, 136, 132?
If Babcock, I, I don't see why they would need a retaining wall, but it shouldn't cause any issues if they were, and then they would have to go through the normal permitting process for a garage or something like that. But yeah, there, there'd be no change in how they're able to use their, their property. And, and just to be clear, that there's, what this recommendation is, there's really not much of a change from how the residents in this area are able to use their property. You're not allowed to go digging into those, those sloped areas. That's why people who have them in their yard for the past 30 years still have them in their yard. This is just making it very clear that you're not allowed to go in and put these things in there. So it's not even really that much of a change from, from how things are right now.
So maybe you can assist, and maybe you can't. So what about the ones that already have or already are?
We're, that's one of the issues that we're trying to address, is to put a stop to them now. Any damage that, any, and, and that's what Mayor McPherson was speaking about a minute ago, about not having the district go in and try and do removal action, because now we're going to own all that stuff. So the stuff that's already happening up there, maybe they weren't allowed. There's any damage that caused, you know, now it's a dispute between those two people, which the district's not involved. Mayor, remember previously, an issue like that coming up between two neighbors, the district had no involvement in it. It was something that needed to be settled between themselves. And that's kind of how we're, we're, that's the spot we're trying to leave this whole area in. And if people are going to go do stuff like this, the district is saying very clearly, don't do it, it's going to cause damage. And if they do, go ahead and do it, it's going to be an issue between the two people.
Counselor Ha. So anyway, I have no problem with the, with the district being able to, to tell the homeowner, this is not something that you want to do. But just define the area, that's all I'm looking for. And I suggest that perhaps, I don't know if we can do this, but it's already been up for discussion, if we can table it. But if, if you guys can come back to us and say, the areas we're talking about where this bank is, is from 192 to 112, or whatever it is on Guillem, and in the cul-de-sac of Secumplace, it's 48 to 60, whatever those exact areas are that nobody can dig into, that's important, because it, again, it includes areas 24, 224, 226, all the way up along that side of Guillem. It's the same area you're talking about, where people's houses back on to each other. There's nothing, there's no reason why those people there couldn't do anything like that in their backyard. So I, just if, definition is what I'm looking for. And I don't know if that's something that we can do, we can table it till we get definition on it, and then we can all vote on it, you know, as, as a group that we understand exactly where we're talking about. I don't like it left up for the, the discretion of staff to say, okay, 108, this, this term is okay, this guy does it, and next term it's not. Why, why was it okay for us to say no to 108 this year, but two years down the road, when somebody else is in place, 108's allowed to do it? If it's defined now, until you figure out what we're going to do with this moratorium, that's what I'm looking for.
Mr. Wall.
Yeah, if council gives us the, the instructions to do that, or fails to pass this motion, that's what we'll do. So right now, for tabling, you're going to have to, you, you could table it. Easiest thing to do though is just defeat the motion out in front of you, which I think was moved and seconded. If the motion's defeated, it'll come back to staff, we'll put it back in front of you on the next meeting, and hopefully have defined it in a way that you guys find acceptable.
Question on the motion?
Okay. All in favor? opposed? All right. 8.2, investment readiness status in future. I think this deserves some, some discussion. Mr. Wall, we're going to start this.
Thank you, your worship. Get up to the right page here. So one of the things that has made significant improvement in Tumble Ridge is our investment readiness. The province puts out a investment readiness score that communities can, can use to check to see how investment ready they are. Now, it was only a couple of years ago where Tumble Ridge had an economic development department for, almost five to seven years, it might have been even longer than that. And so at that time, Tumble Ridge only obtained a score of 15 on this ranking. Now, through the past couple of years, we've been able to raise that score from 15 up to 40. The province requires that you obtain a score of at least 44 to be considered an investment ready. And by the end of 2017, once our projects get wrapped up, we expect to be at a score of 53. So that'll put us way above what the province is saying is an investment-ready community. The only things we'll really be missing out on are stuff that don't make sense for community or size, business clusters. You know, when you go to Vancouver, they advertise Granville Isle. Yeah, Granville Isle, that's right. And, and those types of areas, doesn't make sense for Tumble Ridge to be engaging in that kind of stuff, but we're going to be well above what the province considers. We've got our economic development department, we've had people, just the other day, come in and look at buying land. They're dealt with, the minute they come in, they get their information and we go along. So I think the important thing to remember here is that, you know, when it comes to economic development, business relations, investment, we're not the community that we used to be. We're, we're a very effective community, and we're a good place to come in and invest.
This, this is an issue that we've talked about for quite a while, the council, and it's nice to see it's going in the right direction. Yeah, so, Daryl.
Thank you, worship. Just one thing on that, great job, Mr. Wall, to stop. Just one thing on that, I heard there was discussion in regards to putting up signs on lots that are available and the price. Is that something that we're looking at going forward?
Yeah, one of the next steps that we're going to do is start engaging with the realtors so that they start promoting and selling our land. Because a lot of the time, the first step for people coming in, or the first contact for people coming in isn't always necessarily the municipalities, it's the realtors. So we're going to start advertising them better, working with our realtors. The price of land might not be something we put on them just because it fluctuates so much in a town like Tumble Ridge. And when you have these, when you have land parcels for sale, they'll often stay for sale for, for 10, 15 years. So it's probably better to just have it, you know, contact these people and get an appraisal and stuff like that. So I won't, I won't specifically say the price of land is going to be on there, but the information they're going to need is going to be on there, and our realtors will have access to that as well.
That is one thing that I, I've heard the town here is, personally, is that the realtors sometimes come down on the way to, to handle things. If we, if we can have them promoting what we do, that'd be pretty nice. Counselor Scott.
How many parcels of land do we have available right now for businesses? And, I forgot what I was going to say. Do, do we have that inventory? I know there was lot queue, oh, how, how soon does somebody have? I know there was lot queue, oh, and the, how, how soon does somebody have to, uh, build on it? Can they come in, like speculators or whatever, and purchase when it's down now? So, um, covenants put on them, or, or have those been asked?
So when somebody comes and buys a lot, especially res- for, for residential land business, but I would say the bigger focus is when someone's buying a business or industrial lots, we will put a time limit on that, saying you have to start your development within this amount of time, because we don't want people coming in, you know, especially time like this, when they're buying up all of the investment, business, industrial land, and then selling it really high when it comes up with no, uh, desire to develop it. So that's still there. Residential, if we do put it on there as well, if you're gonna buy the land, we expect you to do something with it. But that's, when you get into residential, it's, it's different. There might be someone who's buying it just because they want that green space, they don't have any plans to, to put a house on it. And depending where it is, that, that could be perfectly fine, right? So, um, there's different cases and different scenarios.
Gotcha. So, uh, right, right back from when we first started in here, I know we've thrown the idea around of taking some of the district lots that we had, like one right across the road from the Sierra, and one across the road from, uh, Bass Gas and that, we were gonna actually put a sign up, and here, here's the piece of property, this is what it looks like, this is for sale for fifty-three thousand dollars. I- is that the route we're going here with this? Is, is that what we're, we're leading into or towards? Mr. Wall.
I don't wanna commit to putting up signs on specific lots again, because price changes, especially in Tumbler Ridge, fluctuate so much that I'm not sure how useful that's gonna be. And the second is, um, you know, I, I would be careful of us putting a lot of sign pollution in, in Tumbler Ridge by putting them on all the different things. But what we're gonna have is an inventory of all the sellable land, what you can use it for, and it'll be in a single access point. So you can go on our, our district website, go land for sale, what type of land do you want? Is it rural residential, is it, is it normal residential, is it business, is it industrial? You click into there, and then you're able to see lot descriptions, um, you know, we hope to update them with pictures, so you get a general idea, a little bit of information. So it would be the same as when you're going to buy a house, you know, you get some pictures of it, you get a little bit of information on it. And then if you're serious about purchasing it, you contact the, the realtor, that could be a REDO, it could be a realtor who goes out and shows it as well. And then that's when you get the more specific information about it as well.
And, and again, I understand that's your opinion on, on how you guys think we should do land sales. But, uh, that's the way it's been done for thirty years in the district of Tumbler Ridge. We haven't been able to sell any land in the district of Tumbler Ridge. What, what I was proposing is something different, to try something, to put these signs up, to say, this is the actual lot, this is what it looks like, this is what its intended use is, you know, like a four-by-four placard up there, and try it, you know? And, and if this is something that we have to bring to a vote to try to get some of our land going, that's something that I would like us to do in the future, is, is to have that. Perhaps there are other councillors here that don't wanna have signs around Tumbler Ridge, uh, promoting the land that we have for sale. But, uh, it's trying something different, right? Let's try something to sell the land. We're coming into an uptick hopefully here in the next few months, and this would be one heck of a good time to have the piece of property available for anybody who wants to come in and do business here in town.
I, I think this is a subject that is worth putting on P and B, that we could sit down and talk about.
Yeah, to be honest, council. Mr. Wall?
Yeah, just, uh, if, if council wants to get into doing those types of things, so there's really two ways that you can direct me to, to achieve that. You can do it through, specifically through motions, like you, you want this specific lot to have a sign on, you want this specific lot. Or you can take a look, uh, just get a copy of our land, um, purchase and land sale policy. And then you can make amendments to that policy and say, you know, if there's any land over this size, or if it's in this area, we want signs on it that contain this information. So you can go either route, individual motions, or you can make changes to the policy.
We could also have it up P and B and come up with some ideas.
Yeah.
Now, Scott.
Um, when was our land policy last updated? Is that one that we, is being worked on?
I can't recall when the land policy was last updated. Two thousand fourteen, thank you, Mr. Torino.
Thank you.
Counsel, I'd like to see that jump to a P and B. To do that. Um, yes, that, that finishes that up. I wanna go back to eight point one, because I don't think we finished that off properly. Are we requesting staff to come up with, um, more of, uh, where this thing should be, we look at?
Is that, is that what we're, yeah.
Yep.
So you, you, you got that?
Yeah, with the motion defeated, I've got the flavor of council and the information that you're looking for. So we'll bring that report back in front of you with, uh, more specifically defined areas.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we had that.
Okay, uh, I think just eight point three, there's a lot of fact.
All right, counsel, I think the, uh, alternate recommendation here, as soon as I find it here.
Page seventy-seven.
Uh, so the district develops a residential lot expansion policy with a checklist that places the onus on the property owner to satisfy to the district's requirements that the development won't cause unintended damage. And that where expansion is permitted and encroachment has already taken place, the district enforces the requirement of the property owner to either formalize their ownership of the land, or to remove their private usage of public property. And that any resident applications to be, uh, sorry, excuse me, to purchase municipal land be dealt with on a case-by-case basis, rather than a district-wide basis.
Okay, secondary fact. Discussion. Seeing none. Mr. Casey?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr., uh, to your worship, uh, what was the recommendation that we're reading off of?
Page seventy-seven, read at the top, alternatives to the recommendation.
Yeah, thank you, worship.
Counsel Scott.
With this, uh, alternative recommendation, where is, uh, staff at with, um, compiling or the, the lists and the checklist and stuff like that? Like, how much time will this take to do?
Uh, it could take a lot of time, and, but, uh, the cost would be borne by whoever.
Great, yeah.
Mr. Wall, you had to add that?
Yeah, so for the actual policy that we would have to create, it would take some time. We're gonna have to go out to, uh, just have to get some engineers basically to create this.
And with the rural, um, expansions, because I think that's something I really want to see go forward with this council. Do, can we do both? Could we do this as well as the rural?
Mr. Wall.
Yeah, I, I, I think so, I don't see any reason why they would conflict with each other.
Rural's the next.
Yes.
Eight point four, so.
So, so the flavor of this, uh, uh, recommendation came back from, again, right when we very first started on council two years ago. And the idea was, was, uh, lot owner A wants to purchase fifty feet behind their property, to come up with a checklist or a way to make that happen for them that satisfies everybody. And it could be so easy as the owner comes in and says, I wanna buy fifty feet. And, and has some formal process that they come in, they fill out the application, what they want, and they submit it to town. So at that point, there's no costs to the town, there's no costs to us, uh, there's no cost to the person purchasing the land. And they look at it and say, yep, there's no reason why we couldn't sell them this land, provided that they don't dig into the bank, provided that they don't, uh, build on top of that water line, provided that they don't put up a fence, provided that they don't cut down trees. There could be just as easy as that. Or there could be something where the two people's lots made up to each other, and the person on the other side has to be given equal opportunity to buy the piece behind them. Once that's been satisfied by the, by the district, the person would be responsible to bore all the costs at that point. So if they wanna do the surveying of the lot, they survey it off, find exactly what it is, come in with the cost. Uh, and, and it's, it's, there will be staff time involved, and there will be engineers and whoever we have to bring in. But that's just as easily taken care of with a, a fee that's placed on each property that's sold. So you say, this fee for us to do our geotechnical, if you have to do geotechnical, uh, is a thousand dollars. The, the fee to do our own, uh, staff look into it is fifteen hundred dollars. So each lot that gets sold has a fee of thirty-five hundred dollars on top of the value of the lot, and all the other additional costs are bore by them. But you don't make them spend all the money upfront to then come back in front of council and say, yeah, I know, we're not gonna sell you that lot. You give them the opportunity in the beginning to come in and say, this is what I'd like to do, provided it satisfies everything. And then they start the process and spend the money to do it. That's kind of the flavor of how we discussed this, and I come in and talk to Mr. Wall about how the process could work. And again, the whole idea of this is to help people that actually live here, and have bought here, and pay the taxes here. This is not to try to get people to come to Tumbler Ridge, this is for the people that actually live here.
I, I have a bit of a concern with that, I mean, you've gotta make sure people are serious. I mean, I think if you don't, if there's no cost, everybody's gonna come wanting, and you're saying, well, check this out. And I, and I really don't think that the, the district, any, any cost to the district, I might come against. There, these, these, uh, this expansion, if it happens, there's gotta be a cost even to make the application, as far as I'm aware.
Darrell?
Yeah, you kinda took the words of the model, I agree with that, there's gotta be a fee there for an application, I mean, uh, there's still staff on application or not, they still have to fill it, all the girls or, or, or Mr. Wall's other staff have to go through them. So are you, are you saying not creating this, Mr. Howell, and doing a different checklist?
Uh, no, no, I'm saying exactly the way the alternative done, but the flavor of how it would work is like this. What my concern is, is that we say, okay, you tell us what you want to, to expand on, and then the resident has to go out, they pay for the surveying, they pay for the geotechnical, they pay for all this, they get ten thousand dollars into a piece of property, and then they present it in front of council, and we say, yeah, no, sorry, we're not gonna sell that one to you. I'd like them to have the op- like, however they wanna develop the list, but that's, that's up to staff to figure out how to do it. I'm not for any costs to the district either. If somebody wants to buy the lot, that cost is bore within it. But to them, just to be able to come in and say, here's the piece behind, for instance, Piece River Crescent. And someone says, I wanna buy eight hundred meters directly behind my house. Staff could come in and immediately say, we're not gonna sell you eight hundred meters directly behind your house. The flavor or, or the, the, the amount that's regular behind your house is about fifty meters, or it's about ten meters or twenty meters. So that is where you have to be within that, and they can go, yeah, sorry, I, I don't wanna do this now, I, I wanted way more than what's there. Or they could say, yeah, that works for me to be able to put my garage on it, would I be able to build a garage on it? And at any point where they've gotta start taking up staff time to figure out if they're allowed to build a garage on it, or whatever, that cost is bore by them. But again, that can all be figured out by staff, but that's just the idea of it. And it has to be a case-by-case basis. There's no way that you can set this in place for the entire district, because every lot has so many different ideas or thoughts or green space or whatever behind it. But there is certainly an opportunity here for us to expand people's lots, people that bought on the, the areas where they could maybe, uh, get into. And, and the way I always thought is that the land value increases, we collect more taxes out of it, and residents are happy with a little bigger piece of land, and they can get their campers off their front lawns, and they can get their firewood put in their backyard, and so they don't have this stuff all out on the street, they've actually got somewhere to park it. Right now, you all know as well as I do, there's encroachment on tons of properties in town. This gives you the opportunity to say, it's number two on this list here, to say, you're encroached on the property, there's a process in place for you to buy that property, so you got two choices, either move your stuff or come down and buy the property. It's brilliant, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
Anything else, uh, Captain?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in a position, I'm just speaking, uh, personally, probably shouldn't do this, but, um, I'm in a, I'm in a piece of property that I would just love to be able to buy a little bit, and, uh, in that, like, see where that would help. But I'm just wondering, now what if you got a, a whole street, and there's land that's develop- that totally, um, you're able to develop it for something else in the future, and, uh, you've got two or three people that have decided to take advantage of something like that? So now you've got a, probably a fairly large tract of, uh, property that becomes undeveloped, undeveloped because of two or three people that have taken that option, and the other twenty maybe haven't. So that's the only, uh, the hiccup I see there, and as, is.
Yeah, and, and there, there's actually other things, like, uh, I know what, what happened, you see it, see it up by my place there, that people have bought the lot behind them, now what would have been a front yard, now a backyard? And it's, uh, you see that around town, a few spots actually. So here you got your front yard, and your neighbor's backyard. That doesn't go very well. And, uh, it's just caused problems before, and it, uh, it very well caused problems again. But I, I think if, if we're gonna do, if we're, if council's in favor of doing this, all that's gotta be looked at when the application comes in. So, you know, it, uh, because it hasn't been before.
Yeah.
It should be.
Yeah, see that?
It might, it might give us more control, you wanna know, too, uh, counsel.
So, so are you talking like perhaps, like the, the land behind your place, like say, for instance, uh, your neighbor wants to buy the property that's in behind your house? Is that what you're talking about? Or you're saying that because you buy one piece behind Piece River Crescent, it wrecks the entire developable property behind Piece River Crescent?
That would probably be the biggest concern, is if, uh, just say, I always take advantage of, uh, moving, moving another thirty feet back.
Yeah.
But I'm the only person that does that.
Yeah.
Then what does that do to the surveyors that wanna come in and, and just say, I mean, that, that area probably isn't the best example, because, uh, that's not a resident, it's not slated for residential, but.
Which area is that, sorry?
Yeah, the, around Mariah.
Okay.
But just in case there was another, uh, the hut right behind the, or the Hundred Acre Woods.
Yeah.
Piece River Crescent, that area. If you went in behind there, you'd be probably interfering with, uh, some development, it could be slated for future, uh, occasion, that, right, in that same spot.
So, so when, when we kinda thought this through, and, well, I guess when I thought it through, and kinda came to council and, and, and tried to get elected based on that principle, the idea there behind was like a place like in behind your place, they have to look at what, what is, uh, you know, can you expand right down to the roadway? Well, no, they wanna leave a buffer of fifteen, eighteen meters or whatever it is. In behind Piece River Crescent, yeah, we may develop that, but we may never do anything with it, it may stay the way it is. You could just as easily, before we go into a Hundred Acre piece of land, you could just as easily carve off a hundred meters behind all those houses, and that's the portion that they could expand onto. And if they choose to expand onto it, or, it's up to them. If your neighbor does it and you don't, and he's got his camper and stuff parked on it, by law, can go in and tell him to move his stuff now. There's a, a process, uh, in place where they can actually buy it and get it. I, I can't see like, uh, you know, there, there could be scenarios around, but that's for staff to look at and figure out for us, right? Or hire somebody to do it, get somebody in place to do it. I think there's a heck of an opportunity here for us to sell land that's just sitting there that is being utilized by people already. Mr. Wall?
Yeah, I'd just draw council's attention to, uh, page seventy-four and the map that's provided there. Because if we're gonna do this, uh, I just wanna go through a couple of the areas, so we understand what's the scope of total possible expansions that we're looking at. So let's start with number one. When you're looking at the east side of number one, and almost all the way along to the west side, for the most part, um, once you get into the west side of it, at the back of the people's property, there's about a six-to-twelve-foot sheer drop. So there's gonna be some properties over maybe on the east side of number one that can expand. Um, when you're in number three, that's where Counselor Mackay is talking about, uh, you know, one person expanding can ruin an entire strip of future development, so, you know, that might not be a good area for it. When we're going into areas, uh, five, that's the area we were just talking about that we shouldn't develop, and four has some, some spots. So from the areas here, there's, there's not gonna be a lot of houses that can take advantage of this. Now, having said that, there are more places that will be able to take advantage of residential lot expansion, but this council is going to have to change the zoning bylaws and remove some of the green belts around town. So you can see the, the strips that are running along all of these areas. If councils, if, if, I would say if council is serious about offering this opportunity to residents of Tumbler Ridge, it's going to require that we remove some parkland to allow it to happen, or else we're talking about a very, very, very minute amount of people who will be able to take advantage of this process. So if, if this is something that council is serious about, I think that's something that needs to be given consideration. Is council willing to do those, um, public meetings and OCP changes and zoning changes to change those, um, P ones to residential to allow for that expansion? Because that's not something staff will do. And if we do, we're gonna have to decide, does council want to make zoning changes every time somebody comes in for an expansion? Or are we just going to, from the very beginning, cut a whole strip off those parklands and allow the development to happen there? So I just, I just wanna talk, uh, put council a little bit of the reasoning that's gone into staff's recommendation, because it wasn't made, uh, it wasn't made lightly.
Well, uh, I, I think, I think you mentioned something that maybe really is a good idea. Let's bring this to a public meeting and see. Let's bring this to a public meeting and see what the public agree, does, because this is a planned community, and it's stressed to me, I don't know how many times, that that's, and that there's people that are jealous because of what we got here. It's planned, it was figured out this is the way, the best way for anti-crime. I don't, I read it in some report here, but it's been stressed a lot of times to me, this is the way this was built for a reason, to be the way it is. I would like to get, if we're going to look at this and be serious about it, I would like to have more of the people's opinion before I can make a decision myself. Because what Counselor McKay says, right, if you've got a couple of houses, it takes a lot, that cuts off that whole strip from being able to run a street down it and make more rocks out of it. So for two people, you're ruining the whole area. I have a real problem with that. Counselor Scott?
At the one asset management meeting, I found something out that the town was designed to, with the population at a peak, I guess, 10,000. So a person does have to keep in mind future development around the area and keep that uniformity. When is our OCP up for renewal, and how long does it take to go through that? Because this is maybe something that, you know, we could look at doing, yeah, as part of that, for those certain areas. Like, it's not something we, you know, could need to decide on tonight.
The OCP can be renewed, it's about time, you want to update it about every five years, and we're getting to that point. So when we're going into this budget season, it's going to be something that council has to weigh, what is more important to you, updating the OCP with that other packages of bylaws and policies that we could do in its place? So it's going to be up to council which one you guys feel is more important.
And then is that a year process? How long does it take to update that?
It depends what we're looking at. If we're just looking at a boilerplate update, it doesn't take long, but I don't think that's what we're looking at because we were talking about doing new urban design guidelines, we're talking about making changes possibly to the park areas to allow for lot expansion. If we're going to do lot expansion and we're updating the OCP, we can actually spend some time, go into it and identify, you know, more specific areas where this could take place. So it could be a more lengthy process than normal.
I think the last one was about two years.
Counselor McKay, you had something?
Yeah, it's kind of a, kind of gone past it now, but I will bring it. You know, just getting back to the, there's, I think, some good ideas here of how we could maybe go about expanding lots. But the points that Mr. Wall brought up, I mean, they're totally valid, and if you want to even focus on the parklands, we had a pretty good contingent. As passionate as I am about wanting to expand my lot, there's far, far, far more people that are passionate about keeping that parkland. And we've seen that before at council meetings here where they came in pretty vocal, and actually some tears shed at the time that we had to reverse. We reversed a decision that we had previously made, and that was for doing exactly what we're talking about here. So I like the idea of putting it out to the public, and let's just see what's there.
I think it's due. This is a really big issue that we're talking about here, and I don't think it should be just made right here, you know.
So isn't that what we're talking about though, is that staff comes up with the ideas for any of this stuff? Like, basically, we're putting the recommendations on the table that we let them figure out the way to do what we want. Is that what we're talking about now, or?
Well, I think what we're talking about is--
Not doing it at all?
No. This being part of our OCP, it's got to be part of a plan for this community. I don't think it's something that just will be in the table, we'll do this or that. It's got to be, it's got to be a regulation setup.
Sure. And I think that's kind of what the intention of the recommendation is, that staff comes up with the scenarios or the one-by-one case. You know, I don't know exactly how they're going to do it, it's up for them to figure it out. For instance, like the area behind Piece River Crescent that you're concerned about, that if one guy expands, it wrecks the entire 100-acre parcel. Pretty sure if a guy expands out 50 feet, it's not going to wreck the entire 100-acre parcel. So you could have an area defined along the backside of Piece River Crescent, perhaps staff goes to everybody in Piece River Crescent and says, "What's the flavor you'd like to expand?" And they say it's 100 feet, so you carve off that 100-foot piece behind people's houses, and if they want to purchase it, great. If they don't, that's just left as bare land between that one and the development that may happen down the road somewhere, or it may not ever happen.
Not an example, drive up along Conusel Place there, Conusel Avenue. And you can see whether they've made backyards where I think that the plan was to have front yards, and they're supposed to be housed up there. And it's the backyards. I don't think they're going to change, ever change that.
There's certainly a place on Murray that did the same thing, a guy on Gullum owned the place, and then he bought the place on Murray, and it's chain-linked fence down around. I remember the issues that this council had to look at, or the council, quite a few that had to look at, remember being quite a hot topic in the paper. But that's exactly the stuff that staff needs to look at. So when the guy comes in at 140 and says, "I want to expand into the lot that's behind me that's going to create this fence down by the roadway," that staff looks at that on the one-off basis and says, "That's not, that doesn't meet the checklist. You can't expand your land to have front yard or backyard at someone's front yard. That's on this, so you are not going to be approved. Don't bother spending your money to try to get the expansion done on that lot." This is why they won't. It's a checklist that's set in place that staff can develop them. And with our help through whatever, right? But--
I think, I think it's got to be done. You can correct me, Mr. Wall, I think it's got to be done through an OCP so that staff can say, "This is the plan, that's why we have these rules."
It depends on what council wants to do. So if we're looking at allowing this residential law expansion into the P1 areas, the park areas, then we're definitely going to need to change the zoning bylaws in the OCP. If we're talking about not going into those areas, then we're not looking at an OCP or change. But as far as, you know, coming back to staff so that we're going to be able to develop a plan, we will never be able to do that. We'll never be able to give council a plan saying this is where expansion can happen. This is, we're cording this stuff off, we'll have to do it on a case-by-case basis. So I'm not sure if I was clear on that. So I will repeat myself. So if we're talking about allowing the park areas, then we're going to have to do a public process, something we have to do by law. If we're not talking about going into the park areas, we don't have to do a public process, but we will not be able to bring that plan back to council. They'll never, we'll never be able to develop a plan because we don't know what people are going to want, we don't know how, you know what I mean? So it's an unplannable situation for staff.
Maybe I'm reading you wrong here, but do you not think rebuilding the OCP is the way to go, that you're going to consider it, something to speak?
Yeah, if we're going to consider making this across the, we need to update the OCP.
I agree with that. I think that's, that's the steps we are looking at. So I'll be voting against the motion because I think that should be done first.
Counselor McKay?
And, I mean, as mentioned there, that maybe the time to look at an OCP is every five years, but it doesn't necessarily have to be. I mean, we could bring this forward sometime, even during the winter, and take a real good look at it. Does that, like, correct or not, or?
I think it should be done with what's going, what we're hoping is going to happen here. Mine starting to pick up again. I think we should do it as quick as possible. So we got our ship in order when things do go.
Could we not add to the recommendation that we update the OCP while we're doing it? Like, why go and update the OCP if we're never actually going to expand the land? That we decided we're going to expand the land, and we get into an area of park that says this has to be looked at through the OCP, then yeah, obviously you update your OCP to go along with it. The park areas that you're talking about, you know, for behind the Secunka, Wolverine, that kind of area there, that could be easily defined as, you know, if we come back 20 feet, it's not going to affect the view or the trees or anybody. You know, when you just say that's it, you go 20 feet back up the community plan, and that's it. And if no one wants to buy that land, then you don't have to worry about changing anything. But they come in and they say, "I want to build right down to McKenzie Way." You say right off the get-go, "No, that's not what's approved here. We don't need to approve this section here." And you update the community plan, it should go ahead. Could that be done in conjunction with what we want to try to do?
I just say in my mind that the OCP should be changed, should be done first, and then it could include that because that's what we want to do. Okay, I guess call a question on the motion. Paul Schaver?
Could we have the motion, whatever it is, read back? Is that the one that--
Page 27 there.
It's not the recommendation, is that correct?
Second one. Are we adding the OCP plan to this motion?
No, it's either, either or, we wait till we do the OCP or--
One question. Will this automatically come forward when we are doing an update on the OCP?
When we're updating the OCP, if this is something council wants to do, you'd have to let us know, so.
How do we do an amendment to this motion properly? By adding it to be doing the OCP plan in 2017?
Mr. Wall?
Properly, you'd make an amendment to the motion. Mayor McPherson already called the question, so the vote should have taken place, but the discussion's continued, so it would be up to Mayor McPherson whether or not he wants to allow discussion to continue or to allow somebody to make amendment to the motion, which would have to be voted on, and then if it's successful, you go back to voting on the original motion.
Up to you, your worship.
We're hard discussing it again, so I'll--
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion Mr. Howell's put on the floor, and the amendment would be to add the OCP plan to this. So it doesn't get lost. What worries me is, I'm in favor of this. I'm not in favor of not updating the policies that staff need to do to make sure it's done right. You don't want to tighten your hands or handcuff your hands and then not be able to do it right. The same essence scares me about this is that it just goes away. This is something that we worked on two years, I think we attended two or three meetings with urban systems. I just don't want to see this. This is something, a thing a lot of us talked at during the campaigns, even after campaigns were done, the first few meetings, and I know previous councils talked about this, and it just seems to always get forgotten. And I think this is something given back to residents that have the ability to, to expand their lots. I am not one of those residents. I still 100% support being able to expand the residential lot and be able to tax that individual.
Okay, so you're saying that you don't want to forget the OCP, but what does that mean?
Let's add the--
We do the OCP before we do this?
No, we would be adding this to the--
We'd be adding this in the-- Not sure, that's what I asked, like, how do you do that, right? So whether it's my--
Yeah, just, I think I understand. So Counselor Pocock, you're saying that on top of this recommendation, which would be a lot for staff to create a residential lot expansion, that the district begins updating the OCP to allow for residential lot expansion? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, second, your worship. More discussion on this, on the amendment?
So your worship, we're looking at the motion that's on the floor is now the alternative recommendation with the inclusion of that one of the writing, correct?
Yeah, that, the amendment.
And just so I know about this, right? This, there will be, there will be no ability for anyone to expand until the OCP, that part of the, that part of the OCP is being completed. Is that correct?
That would be up to council, so it's very likely that with, let's say this amendment passes and then this motion passes, it's very, very likely that the residential lot expansion policy would be created before the OCP changes were ready to go. So it would be up to council at that point what you want to do, would you like to put the policy into place? Would you like the OCP to be updated? It would be, that would be another step that council would have to come and take a look at.
I don't understand that because the OCP is the official community plan. How can you, how can you do, make a change like this without changing the OCP first?
Well, that goes back to what I was speaking about on page 74, that without the OCP changes, there's going to be a very, very small number of households that are able to take advantage of this because they have to be, you pretty much have to be backing on to land that's already zoned residential. So if you take a look here, when you eliminate the areas of one out, when you eliminate the areas of two out, when you eliminate three completely out, because that's owned by the province, so we'd have to buy a big chunk of that land before we could do that when you eliminate the drainage out from five. So there's some spots in four, there's a couple spots in two, and maybe some spots in one. It's not going to be, I really think that this is, we're talking about, without the OCP update, we're talking about a very, 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 very small number of house homeowners.
That's, that's the issue I seem to be, that I'm having here is, how can we go ahead without a change in the OCP? And because there has to be a public consultation there. If we're going to be doing anything with parklands, or, that's the part that I, that I have really, that's the only part that I'm uncomfortable, is us unilaterally making that decision.
Is there any reason why we can't do the OCP and then come back, come back to the motion? How soon can the OCP be done or scheduled or whatever, public hearings, and then come back and deal with this issue of that then? I mean, is there an urgent matter to do this tonight?
Well, if we're not going to, if we're not going to approve residential lot expansion, why do we need to look at the official community plan? That's my look at that. This is the direction we want to go, the process is, yeah, we want to do it, but to do it, you got to fix the official community plan. Go ahead. Counselor McKay said something there that you had to go to a public consultation process. You have to go to a public consultation process to expand or to change any parkland, is that?
Yeah.
That's it? Okay.
Yeah.
So for a portion of it, like you said, there is a portion in here that you would have to go to, to do a public meeting about, but there are portions in here that aren't. And, you know, like, there was a lot of people in town that, not only those that could actually do it, but people thought that it was a good idea to expand our tax base to make more money for the town. They're sitting on the property that's doing nothing, right? We all know that. And I agree that, you know, you don't want to have it all loosey-goosey, but it can be developed by staff, that's what we're saying in the recommendation. Let staff develop it, let them figure it out. And if that means there has to be changes to the official community plan, let them come back to us and say, "Okay, the park areas along here, here, and here, we need to take two votes, but these areas here, 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 and here are good to go already," and let them go.
I'll take us back to the conversation we had at the last meeting. We shouldn't be doing this without a plan. The plan should be done first, and then, and the changes. So I agree with that, that the last meeting, and I agree with it at this meeting. So I think we have to do the plan first, and then look at the expansion. I think we all are in favor of the expansion, but we want to do it right.
Love to see it.
So doesn't that updating the community plan, the recommendation that Counselor Pocock put on the table, doesn't that solve both of the problems?
That should be done first. You have the plan first, then you do, then you go ahead and do your changes to the market direction. Just having the plan done first, and--
Can we put that in the recommendation, that the plan is done first, and then we have, we've agreed? We all just said, you just said, we all think it's a good idea to expand on it, but don't miss out on it. There's no point in changing the OCP if you're not going to approve the recommendation tonight, that's what I'm saying.
The OCPs are updated every five to 10 years, and especially when there's change in economies or, you know, things that this town's gone through. So it'd be a good idea to look at it overall, and with this in the back of everyone's mind, but there may be other things that we want to address when the OCP is being updated. but there may be other things that we want to address when the OCP is being updated. That's when we look at the zoning areas, like, we may have ideas for, you know, future business development and stuff like that. So the OCP is, is something huge, whereas this lot expansion is just one of the things that would be thought about when we're doing that update.
You also address in the OCP, it's larger lots.
Yes.
When we do it.
Yeah.
Address rural lots, you know, all that stuff to address.
Thank you, worship. One thing, thank you very much for bringing up lots of meetings. God, dude, you don't have a plan, so I totally support a lot of the project. The other thing, I don't think the OCP can be just done straight up and use the budget for it, I'm assuming?
Yeah, with the changes that we're, we're talking about, this is going to be a, when I say lengthy, it's not going to drag for years. Major changes, so it's going to take money, it's going to take time, and it's something that we can absolutely do, it'll just take money and time. And how, and you, council can make that decision on, would you like it done cheaper with, and slower, or would you like it done quickly and, and more expensive? That's, that's one of those things. So there's just a couple things, go in, we've got to get the RFP over Urban Design Guidelines. We'd have to bring in some, I think we'd definitely bring in some engineers and city planners if we're talking about these major changes now, but those are all things that can absolutely be done.
And, you know, there might be, if we take a good look at the OCP, there, there's a whole lot of it that's still as solid today as it was when it was, so I don't think we have to go through the whole OCP. And that's what we should be doing, and pick out the areas we want to see changes at. It might very well be that there's not many changes to be made to this. And it's not a big long drawn out, and it's not expensive. And, and just, just like I say, tackle the, the areas that we see that need to be done.
Okay, so we got amendment on the floor. All in favor of the amendment?
Can, can we just play it back so that we know precisely and exactly what the amendment is?
So the amendment is that, the amendment is that we add updating the OCP to allow for residential lot expansion.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment? Question on the main motion?
So I just want some clarification on this. So right now, are we talking about moving forward with creating the residential law expansion policy as well? So getting that done and then going through the OCP, or are we talking about going through the OCP and then doing the residential law expansion? That's the only, I, I don't know the order that council wants that done.
I mean, I don't mean, I don't mean to step on Mr. Howes. My thing is, the OCP plan was first, and if I didn't work it that way, my fault, but it's the OCP plan first with not forgetting this lot expansion, right? That's got to be added into that, so we don't forget it.
Do, do the OCP with the, with the recommendation that we would make season on expansion.
Since I explained that motion incorrectly, I would request that council makes another amending motion to say that the district updates. I'm just trying to think the best way to do this, because if that's the way we want to go, I would say the easiest thing to do is just defeat this motion, reintroduce another one and get it to what you want, because that's not what this motion says.
Agreed.
Okay. So if you're, if the motion as it stands right now, staff will develop a residential law expansion policy. We'll get that in place, and then when we get to the OCD, OCP updates, we'll make sure that the OCP allows for residential law expansion. So that's what this motion is.
Explain this again now.
Your worship.
You just read out another motion? Not the motion that's on the floor right now?
This is the one that's on the floor.
So, so we need to defeat the one that's on the floor, then we're going to use the one you just said?
If, if count, yeah, so, let me just make, forget what we got. If you, path one is what we have on the floor right now, if you vote yes to path one, we're going to develop a lot expansion policy today, tomorrow, we're going to get rid of it, and then we'll update the OCP later. If that's not how you want to do, defeat this motion, introduce a new motion that we make preparations to update the OCP with residential lot expansion as a.
My part of it.
Yeah.
All in favor of the motion for, motion on seventy-seven there? All again? Make the, somebody want to make this motion?
That we advise staff to do an OCP, are we going to do, like, may I ask Mr. Wall? It's going to be for twenty seventeen, bud, correct? We're not going to work on twenty seventeen.
Again, that goes to the question of speed versus expense. If council wants to approve on allocated funds, I can start getting in touch with people tomorrow, it's, it's up to council.
To direct staff to start redoing the OCP plan for the twenty sixteen year, and adding a, the district development residential law expansion policy.
And some money?
Do you do it all at once?
Or, yeah, attach, I think, putting them both in. I would say start at fifteen thousand dollars, and that'll give us a good start.
So can you clean that, that up, make it sound really good?
Any more discussion on this?
Doesn't include all three of these things in here that we're talking about? OCP is first, and all these three things.
So this OCP update would be to allow for residential expansion, but because we're not developing the policy right now, these three things would be left until council gives direction to develop the policy.
Should be up to the OCP to do that.
That's correct.
Any other discussion? All favor? Pose? Okay. Hey, rural residential law.
Do you mind just giving us? Blinding road.
Thank you, worship. Page four, rural residential law expansion. I, this is something that's very dear to my heart, because I do have a rural block, and there ain't many of them around here. And I, and I know how much I love mine, and I think everybody would have one, so. I love this recommendation, that, could I get the recommendation?
That the district pursues scenario three focusing resources on assisting prospective land purchasers in purchasing areas in Tumbler Ridge to encourage a more diverse range of housing options and lot sizes in the community.
Second here? Discussion on this?
Yeah, so I just wanted to double check with staff here, so the idea on this here, if I'm, when I came in and spoke with Mr. Wall, we discussed this, and the way scenario three is set up is, we have a plan, a path, or a plan in place that any prospective person who wants to buy any piece of property within the district of Tumbler Ridge can come in, and the district of Tumbler Ridge will help walk them through that process. We have a plan in place already, is that correct?
So we have, we don't have the plan in place already, but we do know what needs to be done, so what we want to develop is that step-by-step plan, it goes on our website. If you refer to page due, page eighty, we've got information on these five different areas, so what we want to, to have is descriptions of these five areas, you know, what are the types of things you could use it for? And then, if you're interested in buying this, you're going to need to speak to these people over the provincial government, and then along also on our website is, if you're going to speak to buy with, if you're interested in buying this, you know, make sure you have this, 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 and this, because this is what the province is going to need from you. So you're going to be able to come to our website, get information on where, at, at least what we have found to be the desirable areas for rural development. Now, if you're getting outside of these areas, we're probably not going to have information on it, but we still will know, while this is a process, you're going to have to go through, make sure you talk to this person at this department, and from there.
So, so where I'm going at with this is, someone comes out and they decide they want to do a residential lot out in the Bull Moose Valley. So we, that is within the district of Tumbler Ridge, it's not within the community, but it's within the district of Tumbler Ridge. There's already rural resident, rural lots out in that area, but would they be able to then come in and to, I assume, the economic development officer, and say, I'd like to purchase this piece of property out in, in this area here? We will have a path forward for them to, to follow, is that, is that what we're going to, is that what we can get to here?
That's correct. So, and I just want to make sure I'm clear on what that path will be. We will, you know, if, if we feel it's not going to cause, we'll provide layers of support for their application, we'll tell them who to go to, who to talk to, information you're going to need, your expected wait times and stuff like that. So we're not going to handle or stick handle them through anything, but we're going to say, this is who you need to talk to, this is the information that you need, here's your letter of support, if that's something that's going to help them get through, and away you go, and the province is going to deal with all the First Nations stuff, with all the environmental stuff, so we're not going to download any of that onto us, but we will, like you said, give them that path, point them in the right direction, and make sure they have all their supplies with them before they start walking.
In my, my mind, this is, this is massive, this is huge. If, 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 if the district of Tumbler Ridge is finally on board with helping people buy land anywhere within the district, this is a massive step for Tumbler Ridge, especially with these coal mines coming. This opens up the opportunities for people to buy quarter sections around Tumbler Ridge, farmland. They can set up welding shops out in the valley, out in the areas that they, they want to do the servicing at. This is an excellent, excellent opportunity. If this is what it looks like on the surface, like, very good.
And, and the thing is, we need one, one person to do it, and it will solve a lot of questions, because then, once we've done it once, it's easy. Yes?
I also like the idea of designate the area for the smaller, like the quarter sections and that is great, but for instance, behind the stables, if we have an area where people can have five acre or ten acre options, where it's kind of mapped out, and it's relatively close to town, I think people will grab those up as well. And then, again, everything falls on them to develop, we don't have to provide service slots. If it's over five acres, I understand, so it gives people some options.
Yeah, it's, I think it's great, you know, if you can map out something that says, okay, here's, here's step one, all the way through to final purchase of a piece of property. Just the, the one, and, and I, and I think if that's the way we, if that's the way we have to go, then I'm all for it. The only point of contention I have is that we used to own all that property. Once upon a time, an agreement was made, and I'm not sure exactly how, it had something to do with the mines and their arrangement with CMHC, that, that the province ended up with, with a great, pretty good tract of land, it used to belong to the district of Tumbler Ridge. I want, I'd like to get some of that back.
One, one day, we were the highest debt or capita community in Canada. The next day, we were debt free, that's how that happened.
Yeah, and it was through, not, not, not through really anything that had anything to do with residents of Tumbler Ridge, more to do with some of the other stuff that was going on. Now, is there a flavor for us going and asking for the province, even at a decent rate, to go after some of our crown land, the crown land that we used to have, and do it ourselves, take the sales ourselves?
It would, I mean, it, it, it'd never happen if you don't ask.
Yeah, and I don't want to throw a flying ointment in the way, because I think whatever it takes to get this done the quickest is the best way to go. And, and what my, my scenario there might not be the quickest way to go. But I think having ten acre, twenty acre low farms around Tumbler Ridge gives this whole place a whole different, different type of appeal.
Sure does. So what would we be looking at for a timeline from staff, that we would have this, this pathway developed? How long would we be looking at before we could really take this and put it on our website, blast it out there? Land for sale in Tumbler Ridge, how, how long?
If council recalls, there was a grant that came out, the rural. Rural dividend grant? When they came out with that, they said that communities that were in crisis could apply for this anytime, and we, we would get in. They put that program out, and despite the repeated and several heated conversations with provincial governments, they never defined what a community in crisis. So that grant was never accepted. Now, there's an intake coming up on October third, so that grant will go in, we're going to wait for that, get approval, and then we'll be able to move forward on finishing that. So the delay has been the fact that this investment readiness package was supposed to have been paid for us by the province to help us as a community in crisis, but the provincial government bureaucrats wouldn't define what a community in crisis is. And on our conversations with them, I said, well, whatever you want to define a community in crisis as, Tumbler Ridge is a community in crisis, so you can play around at the margins wherever you want. We're over here, it, they still didn't make that approval, so we're just waiting for that to come through. Once that comes through, it'll take getting it up. I would say, I would hope into the, you got to get the website up, you got to build that map, and then put it up there. Summer twenty seventeen, everything should be up there and good. I know everybody wants it done faster, I can see the reasons, but this is one thing I'll say. These types of changes, you know, the change to get us from fifteen to fourteen on that score, the, the idea is that we're making steady, progressive improvements on something that's going to last. A lot of what's been built in the district in the past has been built, and when somebody leaves their department, then it's lost, and nobody knows where to pick it up. I know when I came into my apartment, it felt like that. So it takes more time to go through it slower and make sure those structures are in place, but it will make sure that we have something that lasts for fifteen years, so that if Mr. Powell moves on, or if somebody else moves on, the person who comes in and takes their spot has a system that's already working. So I, I know that the quick thing to do, like, if we were just going to put it in somebody's head, we could have it up probably by the spring, but if we're going to build a system that has the policies that go with it, it's going to take a little bit more time.
Just ask you to do it as quickly as possible.
The one, one more thing I'll just add on to that, just because that full, perfect system that's going to last, and it's, won't get lost when staff turnover comes, isn't in place, doesn't mean that the person who comes in and talks to us doesn't get the help they need to get what they want. That is already there. What, what's needed in the department heads' minds is already there. Somebody comes in, it just happened last week, looking to buy land, they talk to us, we walk them through the process, and we help them, so it'll take time for the system, but the ability to do this is already in place.
What would it take to do it faster?
What?
Idea? Ask them, can we hire somebody?
What with the investment readiness package, what was the value of that grant?
We can, the maximum was five quarters of a hundred thousand. Several steps of the.
What was the investment readiness, the one that we put in? I, I'd have to double check, but I believe the grant we were requesting was about fifty or sixty thousand dollars. So to get all that work done, it would be about fifty or sixty thousand dollars.
So fifty or sixty thousand dollars to create the pathway for somebody to be able to come in and say, I'd like to purchase said lot?
To gather the information to create the pathway. We'll still have to, we get that.
So is that, is that something we can, we can add?
Do the grant?
The way I look at it, it's been two years coming, right? Been two years to get to this point, since I, I came on council, December is two years. And if it takes fifty or sixty thousand dollars to get us to the point that we can sell land in Tumbler Ridge, or there's a process to do it, or whatever, then that's a small price to pay for the people that could move here.
Is it not? I, I think that it's there already, the way to get ground land. That we're, we're just going to streamline this, right? So if, if somebody comes in and wants to buy a piece of the land out here by the Qua, they could apply that to provincial government that tomorrow.
That's correct. And we have staff that could, if they come in and talk to us, we can help them through that process, and I'd also just know. And I'd also just note that the, a lot of this has to do with, the website needs to be built first before we can start populating it, and the website won't be built until, uh, it won't be up and running until early December. So there's nothing we can do about, about that timeline. It's just, again, it takes time to build these permanent, uh, systems.
And I agree with that, but, but, uh, again, the fact is that they, somebody could walk in there tomorrow and you could point him in the right direction that he could apply for some of that land out there.
That's correct.
And that, and that's all we can ask, right off the bat.
Yeah.
No, thank you, worship. Councilman Mackay mentioned something, I just want a clarification. So if it is comes in, they talk to staff in regards to that. What's, what's the chances on the government doing it or not doing it? Up to them? Just curious what the ratio of, uh, gain would be.
Mr. Wall?
The provincial government would only deny it for a couple of reasons. One, uh, one of the First Nations fans, uh, 'cause any land sale needs to go through consultations, so they raise flags on it. Now, First Nations don't have a veto on land sales, but they certainly are involved in the process. Issues with business, if, uh, you know, they're, they're looking and there's some, um, natural resource tenures on there, they won't do it. And then the third one would be is if the district rose, uh, objections to it happening. So as long as those three things are clear, the province doesn't have any issue selling the land out here. And I, I haven't heard of the province denying it. Oh, sorry, and the fourth one will be, is it if it's in a parks area? If it's something that the province has done on parks, then we're, it, it, very, very likely it won't happen, and there's nothing the district could do about that. We could buy that land off of them, but the province is gonna say, yeah, it's all yours, can't use it for anything except for recreation.
See, I think the only time this has happened around here is my place. And that was, there was no opposition to from the provincial government.
Subdivision towards heavy industrial.
Yeah.
The Raymar, the Raymar, uh, thing they did.
Do, do we have a map with the areas that are zoned for parks and stuff like that? That, and, and this, um, work is available for, like, sale?
That's part of what, what I'm talking about, we need to spend the time going to develop that information. That's part of what I'm, I'm talking about. And then does, the provincial government doesn't put up, well, this is for sale, this is not for sale. You'd have to take a look what they've zoned as parks. Um, those maps are, uh, available, they're incredibly complicated and updated, um, all the time. As new tenures come in, as new areas expand and stuff like that. So it's one of those things that will give the best information we can. It'll never be up to date, because as soon as you put a map up by the next morning, especially in an area with this, this rich in, um, natural resources, it's going to be changing on a weekly basis.
So then people just carve off an area if they have an idea for, like, a business or the, uh, farm range or whatever, and then request, come in and see the district?
That's correct.
Hey. Yeah, we got a motion on the floor, so, um, call a question, all in favor? Vote? A, uh, council governance session. Mr. Wall, you wanna end that? Or do we just got a recommendation, we'll get that first. Mr. Scott?
The council confirms their attendance at the November 20th council governance workshop.
We were looking for motion here.
Yeah? Okay, discussion on that.
I have a question. Uh, previously, this was scheduled and it was five thousand, now we've jumped up to ten. I was just wondering why the?
Uh, the original session was seven thousand dollars. Um, when this motion was put in, uh, it's an amount up to ten thousand dollars, so it doesn't mean that that's what's gonna be spent. But I, I wasn't sure if we were gonna be able to get the group that we had gotten originally, and they're, like I said, the first time, they're new to it, so you get, they're a little bit cheaper than other, um, people who, who do it. If we weren't able to get that group, it was gonna be more expensive.
So it might be under the ten then?
It will be under the ten.
Okay.
So, um, are we're looking for people, let's say, yeah, I can make it tonight?
I'm just, yeah, putting it out there and the, the dates on November 20th. If council can confirm their attendance, that would be, uh, sure would be good.
All in favor of this? Vote? Just to the old timers lease agreements. A little bit like a hockey player?
And I'd just like to let council know, I've mentioned this before, but I'm also a member of the, uh, office and anything I have to say on the issue.
I, I know what, um, I read it all around, and I, I feel for all these groups and everything, trying to make it here. Now, this, this rate was set in nineteen ninety-three, I think?
Yes.
Costs a lot more today to run that rec center than it did in nineteen ninety-three, I'll tell you that. I don't know. I used to do everything for nothing, but you can't do that. I guess, uh, anybody else wanna?
We wanna comment, uh, my concern on that too. And again, you brought up the point of, what, nineteen ninety-three? And, uh, so that's been a long time that we've put off. The other thing that strikes me that if we're going to do for home, we better do for all. And, uh, I think that if, if, uh, we're gonna have other organizations coming in looking for the same, and this is gonna be, I think, you, we'll be using, and they will say, hey, listen, did it for them, why don't we do it for, for this club or that organization and so forth? But especially where we've looked at this before and nothing has changed in nineteen ninety-three, I don't, I don't think what has been enclosed in here for some reason at all. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, worship. I actually have a different feeling, probably the ones that always say it changes everything for free. I think I'm taking different here too. One thing is, I look at the old timers doing, don't get me wrong, if you do one, you do for the other, the curling clubs are coming up, I have a same kind of speech for them as well. Is we charge two thousand dollars for their dressing room or their club room, whatever they use there, and then their ice is at one oh two. We give Grant and Aidan, these, these individuals, uh, maybe I'm wrong and staff can tell me, but they're the people that come in looking for Grant and Aidan and like that. And I could be wrong, but my thing is, I don't, like, this is a tough year, it's been a tough year on everybody, not just organizations, soccer, baseball, we're the saddle club, they did commit for Grant and Aidan, other organizations. But it's two thousand dollars for a dressing room. I'm more in favor to see us waive that two thousand dollar fee for one year only, then coming back in and discussing with staff, come to the council in early September of twenty seventeen to renegotiate a contract and see where times bring us. The same with ice time, maybe we could do some of their ice time. I understand it costs ninety dollars. I'd really get that, I'm more in favor of trying to come more revenue neutral over there, instead of costing Mr. Powell's budget to, to give everything for free over there, so get that part too. I, I really am, I'm, I'm definitely not gonna vote in, in favor, no motions on the floor yet, but I think we should be waiving the two thousand dollars for the one year and looking at trying to lower their ice rate, even if it's down to ninety bucks. They, they bring in tournaments twice a year, it's either them or the old timers or the, uh, rec league, and they bring in a ton of teams into our hotels and our restaurants. And that really does support Tumbler Ridge in tough times. I know last year it was, it was a big help in, in regards to our hotels and restaurants. So, I mean, I think, you know, it's a benefit by waiving two thousand dollars for a year, dropping their ice rate down, that's just my thoughts.
Sorry, I just wanted to bring something that I apologize, being a person, I, I, I heard you mention this before. But the, um, the nineteen ninety-three figure is actually the ice rental rates. The, uh, the lease rate, I'm not, I can't, I'm not sure that it, uh, has been the same since nineteen ninety-three, if I recall what our community director, community services director was mentioning before. Eileen, do you know a little bit more than that? I think that the, the lease rate has actually been renegotiated a few times since nineteen ninety-three. So the ice rental rates have been the same, but I do not believe the lease rate has been the same. So there has been inflation on the, um, the, uh, lease rate has had inflation since nineteen ninety-three. So that's not the same.
Councilman Mackay?
Good question before, before I, I continue, but, uh, what is the rate that minor hockey pays for ice time?
It's on page ninety-two, uh, regular youth, seventy-three for prime, fifty-one for non-prime.
Okay, so the prime time is what we're looking at, uh, for, for the, yeah, the seniors? And the other thing is the, uh, the dressing room that they occupy. Did, did, do we clean that at all, or is there any maintenance, or do they pretty well look after that themselves?
The old timers clean the room themselves, they do minor repairs themselves. If we're getting into major issues, like within the building, then maintenance will come in, but for the most part, it's maintained and cleaned by the old timers themselves.
And I think the key for me here anyway is that it's done, anything we do is on a temporary basis, and, uh, and I'd be willing to have the ice time the same as the, uh, perhaps even put a motion forward, that, that the same as the, uh, minor hockey. And the, uh, just a minimal fee for, for the, uh, for the dressing room, which we do absolutely nothing unless it's totally required. And that, that's leave that up for debate. The dressing room. I think, I think they're, they've been pretty good tenants the whole time to be there, and they're going through some tough times with membership.
What about the, the ice time, the way it is, and, um, it is off the dressing room for you?
I, I, I'll vote in favor of that. That's the motion.
I have no problems.
I'll make that motion.
Just for clarification, you're making the motion?
We, um, don't charge rental on, um, on the room?
Okay.
And leave the ice time to say?
Could I ask council to change it to one dollar? It just makes things easier.
Thank you. That's a one year, this is a one year thing.
One year deal.
Hey, all in favor? Yeah, goes right? Okay, eight point seven, the curling club. We have, um, recommendation there.
Just before the recommendation, just like to discuss a bit like we did the previous here. And I already came forward, um, in our council meeting to us, and the same thing is, I know they have, I believe they have nine thousand dollars outstanding, right? And if, do they pay for the room upstairs, do they pay a rental on that? Like they have their, um,
Oh, the bar.
The bar, that they're, they pay for rental on that? What was the amount on that, do you know? Sorry.
It's just all grouped into one lease?
Just, just in one lease?
Yeah.
I know one that I, I talked to, the young lady after, and just tried to see if it was cheaper for them to look at a, an ice per hour scenario? And, and same thing, maybe giving the room to it for a buck or whatever it was gonna be, but, I told her to come back to you and talk to you, I'm not sure she ever did, 'cause I've never seen, I've never, she's never come back. 'Cause I was seeing the same thing, it might be cheaper for them to be renting it by an hourly rate instead of, uh, whatever they're paying, they're paying thirteen thousand dollars or something like that a year. Um, I wish that we knew, like, I don't wanna,
I, I don't know if, um, it, it might work, like, can I, I think, I think the same as you, is that if they don't have nobody to curtail, they don't need ice that much. And if, um, they said they're gonna have an increase this year, so they don't even know what they're gonna have. Maybe we could direct staff to come up, see if they come up with a hourly rate that works, and, um, do it that way, yeah.
I think it was, it hit down the same path as you and your worship, is maybe we could table it and see if we could, uh, have staff contact them, and just see if the hourly rate that the district would come up with through staff would, would meet their, their minimum or something like that, in, in same aspect as the, uh, old timers, whether it's the same ice deep per hour, and then upstairs would be a, a one dollar fee. I'm not sure what this council thinks, but it, just something like that, see what their feelings.
We can go down that path, but the earliest that we're gonna get decision back from council would now be October 3rd, I believe, the next meeting. I would imagine that they wanted to start curling before then. I, I would, we can definitely go down that path. I would suggest to council, the easiest thing to do would be to determine an amount you think is fair for them to pay this year, and set that as the lease amount, and then we can move forward. But if you want us to enter into those negotiations, we can come back. But again, the earliest we get that decision would be October 3rd. And if for whatever reason we don't come to an agreement, we go back out. Now, the earliest is gonna be, uh, two weeks after that, right? So the seventeenth? It's up to council how you, how you wanna see.
That is a curling rink this year.
Yeah.
Nothing we can do about that. So having somebody there throwing rocks is, we better have nobody.
Are we just able, worship, through to Mr. Wall, are we able just to, uh, do the direct staff to maybe come up with them and just waive a fee until the end of October? I mean, they can use it, or is there legals there? If they wanna cause a grief?
The issue we're, we're dealing with here is curling rinks, all of the country are dying. And, uh, ours is no different, and I don't, you know, yeah, ours is worse because of our situation here. But I, I look at that space as maybe a valuable space for some other, some other thing, you know, that might be used a lot more in curling rinks now, so I'd like to see how they do this year, but, uh, I'm an old curter, I shouldn't be sitting in that back room, but I'm a curter anymore, so. But, uh,
That's a tough year this year. Like, you never know what's gonna turn out, and it's no different than, than our economy in regards to when a coal company starts opening up, and you never know what's coming, so. You know, by December, they could have full teams out there, and then next year it's back to the same contract. It, it's not a takeaway from Mr. Wall's budget, that's the same as the old timers. You know, next year it could be there's, there's, the, and you go right back to the same piece.
So, we have those rate rates, uh, like rates for all of our uses, but they're set by bylaw, and we do have the, um, fees and charges bylaw coming up in October, so that would be the opportunity to go into it. But, um, it's, it's not just as easy as us getting to set whatever rate that it is we wanted in bylaw. So now we're talking about not even October 3rd. If everything goes according to plan, it's three readings on October 3rd, and then a reading into the seventeenth. So I would say if that's the model council wants to go down, we wish, we should talk to the curlers and say, come in, get this sorted out, you know, before, not right before the season gets started. So this year, again, my recommendation to council is determine an amount that you guys feel is appropriate for them to pay for this season, and then we can just proceed, if not, we can take the other path. I'm advising you that it's probably gonna eliminate a lot more time consuming than, than what you think.
So they pay your own nine thousand, that's right?
That's correct.
You guys on the move? The season, fif- two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen season is set at thirteen sixty-one?
Yeah.
So they owe nine thousand on that?
Yes, that's correct. So, sorry, the, um, this is, it gets a little bit confusing here, because they are thirteen thousand, uh, they owe us thirteen thousand dollars from last year, but they've indicated that they're going to pay it down to nine thousand dollars, and then they're asking council, it's in the letter that, um, uh, Ms. Queen had sent. They're asking council, once they pay down to nine thousand dollars, that you forgive that nine thousand, and then set this year's rate at nine thousand as well. Does that make sense? So they owe thirteen from last year, they're gonna give us money. Does that make sense? So they owe thirteen from last year, they're gonna give us money to bring it down to nine. And then they're gonna, they're asking you to waive that nine. And then they, it's about eighteen thousand dollars for this year, they want you to forgive nine of that and only have them pay nine for this year. Does that make sense?
They're gonna pay four thousand dollars, is what they're gonna pay.
They're gonna pay four thousand dollars more for last year and then nine thousand dollars for this year is what they're asking, instead of eighteen for this year.
So, so my issue with this is the lounge upstairs. So if they can't make a go of it, we're going to, again, give them another piece of, uh, the rec center. Perhaps they shouldn't have that anymore. If they, if they can't make a go of it, they shouldn't have their own lounge up there. Perhaps that lounge should be taken right out, expand the community park that you got up there into that. And, you know, there is a, an establishment upstairs where you can go have a, a drink or, or whatever. Maybe that's the, the trade-off. If they don't wanna pay the nine thousand dollars from last year and they wanna cut in the rate from this year, you take the lounge out of the lease and you can have the, the ice in the area down below. But there has to be some bit of a trade-off there. There's an opportunity there for the district of Tumblr Ridge to make some money on that, that area or expand into it or, or something. To me, there's a bit of a trade-off there. And it would help the people that are actually in the rec center right now as well, help that for students as the lease there.
Good ideas?
That's kind of, uh, what I was kinda wondering along the same lines here is, um, just, just what percentage of that lease? It does the, uh, does the lounge actually take up what for the ice? Is there a breakdown on that or is it just a flat rate for everything?
It's just great for the whole thing, so if, we can do what council or how it's suggesting.
Or another suggestion, um, something similar to the Willow Hall, where everybody has their lockups up there. Could, could that be expanded for use for other groups? Is that, is that an option?
The, the upstairs adoption?
The upstairs, the, the lounge itself. So we, we could be renting that out to other user groups as well as the curling club.
Is that also a, a potential business? Can somebody rent that space off the district and then store up something in there? And that would be revenue for the community such as? And then whose liquor license does, like, that one under?
Do they have their own licorice or?
Uh, it's on our building, so it's our liquor license, but they get the operating permit underneath it.
I, I, I really like that, that idea, because, I mean, if you're, they gotta pull back too, they could hurt it. The lounge is kind of a bonus, so. It's not feasible anymore.
Just need a, a motion from council and that's what we'll do.
The other option, like, we, we've discussed that if they want to keep the lounge, if that's what generates the income for, from them, that, you know, that they keep the lounge portion and they rent the rink out of it, so you give them the two options and come back to us and see which one is, is the option that they want. I, I, I think that they should be involved in the process, right, to see what works for them, to help them out with it. But at the end of the day, if they're, if they're not willing to pay the money for the lease that they took on, is there an opportunity for the residents of this town to make something off, of a portion of it? I don't understand how a lease on something can work if they leased the entire curling rink and lounge area, that how anybody else can use that at that point? Like, how would that be any, you know, it just doesn't make sense to me how that is different from the, the hockey arena, it's the same thing. That'd be as if minor hockey rented the entire hockey arena, but everybody else is allowed to use it for minor hockey. So how, how does anybody else get to use it? That's what we're agreeing.
Yeah, so built into the lease agreement is that other people can use it and then they get charged for using it according to the rate statement we have in our bylaw. So I just, I just wanna bring up to council again, if we're talking about setting rates for them to curl at, you know, we'll come back to you on October third, you'll run it by you. And if it's acceptable, you do the first three readings and then we go and do the final reading, not till the end of October. If we're getting into negotiations still at that point, then we're getting the first three readings at the end of October. And it's not till early November that we get this sorted out. I, again, really think, find an amount that you guys think is fair for them to pay for this year. And, and that can include the lounge, you cannot include the lounge, you know, that, that part's fine. We're talking about getting hourly rates for curling. We're, we're looking at making changes to one of our bylaws and it's gonna be a lot more, it's gonna be a more lengthy process than just saying, well, this is what we want, getting it done.
I, I think that's, I, I agree with Mr. Wall on that. And we, we talked about the, open that business up for someone else. Um, if we remember, that's why we, uh, we, uh, changed the, uh, the restaurant that was there before. Because we have a drink, a drinking establishment directly beside a playground. And that resulted in quite a few incidents as well as janitors having to go and, you know. Anyway, it was on and on and on, I mean, that, that was the reason why we got rid of that to begin with. If we're going back that route, just a step backwards. And, uh, if it was to, to me, if it was a private, uh, function, then, then, uh, I think that liquor is now, I think that's the way it should stay. But, um, maybe that's the answer, is just to do something monetarily. Again, a one-year, maybe a one-year deal and, and, uh, and if there's a, if there's something that we could forgive them, uh, we've done that in the past. To a, to a group that's having problems, we've just done it to group previously, uh, previously here to this discussion, so.
Make the motion.
Yep, it's just the mo, uh, yeah, can you give me a minute?
I'll make the motion for Council Mackay, that we waived the nine thousand dollars from the twenty fifteen, uh, fees in the road. And charged him for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen season, nine thousand dollars, including them keeping a lobby. They came back, that's what we asked.
One, and a one-year deal.
One-year deal.
Secondary.
Okay, secondary. Any more discussion on it?
So how, how would that work then for anymore, like, would, would the curling club be allowed to come back then and discuss this before the ice is in? Like, by the time they came to us this year with the request, the ice is already in. And now we find out that they're having the problems paying for it. Would this ma, make sense if they had to come back to us in March, once the season is over and, and come up with some options? Perhaps, you know, like, I, I'm not a curler, I don't know how it works, maybe they really need that area up top to make a go of it, or maybe they don't. Maybe they could move that lounge area, uh, lower, so they just have the, the bottom, I mean, it mirrors, upstairs mirrors the bottom. So perhaps if we could just have that discussion with them, we might be able to come up with a, an arrangement there for them.
Maybe we add, add on to that, uh, if you're okay with that, that we send a letter to, to the end of the season, they come in and discuss what changes we can make to the, make it work.
We can just put it right into the lease negotiating period at the end of the.
So I just want a bit of clarification. So we're going to, they're going to pass four thousand dollars for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen season and then nine thousand for this year.
They're, sorry, that's, they're gonna pay a total of nine thousand for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen and a total of nine thousand for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. I would just ask if council wants me to put that negotiating period, if somebody just wanted to make an amendment to the motion and I'll get it included.
How about that?
If, if you want me to include in the lease, um, that I add a negotiating period at the end of the season, so they come in and the, the lease negotiation takes place at the end of the season.
Yeah.
Just if you wanna pass that amendment and I'll make sure it's included on the lease.
So we've got an amendment to go on?
If somebody wants to make a motion.
Secondary.
Do we have a fine period, two months or?
Yeah, I'll, I can take it, at that point, I can take it and, and work it into it, I'll talk to them. Because I know one of the issues with the curling club previously was at the end of the last season, their leadership changed. So we might wanna give them a, a fairly long window to figure, figure it out.
On the favor of the amendment? And I call a question on the main motion. On the favor? I'll issue review of it.
Just a recommendation? District Tumblr Ridge approves the recommended amendments for the following personnel policies. Piers two, piers three, piers four, piers five, piers eight, piers eleven, piers twelve.
Secondary. Discussion on that?
Uh, in regards to piers eight, the impaired driving, uh, so the recommendation that staff has here is, uh, employee has a driver's license suspended, the case will be assessed on an individual basis. What's, what's the idea behind that there? If staff member needs to drive for their job and loses their license, should they not, uh, also lose their employment?
There's union issues that get into that collective agreements and how we deal with issues like that. So, um, that's why we're saying it needs to be dealt with on a case-by-case basis.
So for union employees?
Sorry, go ahead, Council.
That's for union employees, what about staff employees?
For dist, district staff, it would be, uh, you know, we all fall under the, the personal codes of conduct. And if it's an example, it's gonna be my, it'll be me that, that deals with it at that point.
Yeah, so, so it's kinda what, what I'm saying there is, is why, why have a discretion on that? Why not have it in black and white right off the get-go? You are staff of District Tumblr Ridge and you lose your license for impaired driving, you lose your job. Why have it so that, ah, you know, you're a good guy, you know, you're one of the old boys, right? You don't have to lose your job.
Mr. Wall?
Uh, 'cause if you're in a position that doesn't require you to drive, like you walk or whatever, um, then you, we fire you because you don't have your license, then we would probably dispute something. This is one of those things we need to, we can't put it just in black and white, because if it's not part of your job requirement, like, let's say you're working in, in finance, you off the work, you if we fire you because you don't have a driver's license, there's a good chance we're gonna get into trouble. So we need to have that individual case-by-case basis.
Okay, Council Scott.
I was just gonna ask, does the district have a drug and alcohol policy? Like, in the industry, it's usually a zero tolerance and it falls into the, uh, the personnel, um, conduct and all of that stuff. And there's usually a zero tolerance for, for drug and alcohol. During, you know, being fit for service and stuff like that, I, I was just wondering if the district has something like that in place.
Mr. Wall?
We have, we do have a drug and alcohol policy, that's correct. It's, um, zero tolerance is in your, there's zero tolerance in you coming to work impaired. If you come to work impaired, you go home, but it's, uh, not a straightaway dismissal. Again, we have, uh, a, a union agreement that we have to abide by and steps that need to be taken in all sort, in all of these cases.
Yeah, I don't think it really bo, uh, I don't think it truly falls on the side, union or staff or anything. I think it was an accommodation issue of is, uh, deemed as a sickness. And that's, I mean, those are the rules that are prevalent now, I mean, it's, uh, it's not just clear-cut in case where somebody gets fired.
Okay, um, on the favor? Hey, uh, three point nine, off-road vehicles are a little. Recommendation?
The District of Tumblr Ridge, as a sponsor of the resolution, resolution withdraw D sixty-seven, regulation of off-road vehicles, approved by council. And Mayor McPherson contacted Peace River, Regional District, to request approval of the withdrawal in the district working with UDCM to craft a resolution for twenty seventeen.
A secondary for that? Council Scott. Discussion on that? Yeah, I'll, I'll be there this week, so I can get it done. All the favor? Hey, schedule the meetings. Crazy dad. Just try. Nothing, that's good. Want your business. Oh, just meant notice motion, limits in Tumblr Ridge. So how would you, pretty much?
God, I, I don't really know why it's on here, I thought we talked about it at the PNC that that we were gonna increase the speed limits from fifty, or from thirty to fifty.
Okay, um, I had a bit of a concern about that and then I happened to get at that meeting. It seemed to go through very quickly and then one of the people in the gallery said, uh, what about the school zone and the playground zone? When you're, when you are increasing the speed limits on those streets, you're not increasing it quite very far, because, um, you are ready towards playground area and, um, school area, so. I don't know, I think it's something that maybe we did, you know, enough discussion. On myself, I think, uh, agenda didn't make a whole bunch of sense, but.
So I don't really know the school area that we're, we're discussing, but school zones already are attracted to thirty kilometers an hour during school period.
Yeah.
So the, on Monkman Way, there's the elementary school and on South Gate, there's the high school. But they, they put a sign in place so that you slow down to thirty kilometers an hour. Why have the signs in place, it's already thirty kilometers an hour, right? So, and the, the playground areas, well, there's playgrounds alongside of Monkman Way, there's a sports field right along Monkman Way. That's been fifty kilometers an hour since day one, there's an elementary school right along there. So to me, the, the argument that, you know, you shouldn't be able to do fifty kilometers an hour in the downtown core because a child may walk across the street or a person, well, yeah, they could walk across the street on Monkman or McKenzie Way as well. We have crosswalks, well-defined crosswalks where you can get across the roads. And it's a four-lane road, I mean, there's the ability to travel at a little bit better speed than thirty kilometers an hour, so. Uh, I thought we already had the vote on it, I thought the vote passed, I don't understand why it has to come back for another vote again, but perhaps I just don't understand the procedures of how it works.
I can bring it back for another.
Also, you, you've brought it back?
Yeah, I talked to Mr. Wall. I think he had to bring it back for another reason. Mr. Wall?
Yeah, I brought it back just because it's gonna take us money to buy the signs, build a base, put it in. So it wasn't a motion in good standing in a P and P. Uh, it's not something we could execute, so I brought it to the regular meeting, so it can be, uh, approved. And Mayor McPherson, after, um, the agenda was produced, actually spoke about wanting to bring it back for reconsideration, which he has the power to do as a mayor. Uh, but it was on, so the reason I brought it was that it wasn't a, a, um, it wasn't a motion in good standing from the P and P.
Um, but I, I still say you're, you're just increasing the speed limit for short period, I think. That's, that's up to council's side, I just, it just, I never thought till I've gentleman mentioned it at the meeting. It didn't make a whole lot of sense to me when he said that, so.
But where, where are the speed levels, like where?
Playground, so I mean, there, there's a skate park over here.
Yeah, but Monkman Way runs right along the skate park too, it's already fifty kilometers an hour.
Yeah, and it should, it should be stopped there, or there to thirty, I think, because of the playground. But it's always that long, there's, it's, um, look at it, I think the whole thing should be thirty. It's just me. Council Scott.
And there was also some information that, that, uh, that we should be changing them because, uh, the, the, the driving instructors were, wouldn't be coming into town because of the, the speed limit was consistently thirty.
Yeah.
And that not, that wasn't really the case, it was actually, there was other reasons why they weren't coming into town. So that, that came out after that vote too, so.
Oh, that was part of it.
Yeah, it was part of it.
Part of it, they said that was part of the reason why they're leaving Tumblr Ridge. But again, we're losing another service in Tumblr Ridge that we can do something to fix it by putting the speed limits back to fifty, then asking them, listen, we've done our part, we've changed the speed limits in the downtown core, back to fifty, what you guys required. Instead of coming in once a month and losing money on it, can you come in twice a month? So we still have the service offered in Tumblr Ridge. If they say no to that, what about once every three months? Like, continue to offer the services, do what we gotta do to keep the services in Tumblr Ridge. That's what they've asked us to do, we're doing our part, it's up to them to do their part.
And their, their big concern was the numbers they were getting. That, that seemed to be the, the largest concern, was they just weren't getting the clientele going through, right? So, so would, that would determine whether they come in or not. So, so would, that would determine whether they come in or not, not the, the speed limits. That's just another, I guess, another thing that we threw onto the end. But, but that's what, uh, that, and also the gentleman at the end there. I mean, that, that was, that made me seem that we have rushed this. And so, I'm kinda, although I, I didn't expect to see that, I didn't see that. Glad it did come back, but because he brings a valid point.
Right there. Thank you, Worship. Yeah, it, it came back. I still have no problem supporting the same motion as P P C. Um, I was in top with Josie over at the insurance place and that is one of the main reasons why the people have stopped doing driver's licenses. She's actually forwarded me an email, which I'll share with council, um, right from the two instructors. And states right in, that they didn't talk about anything else. Talking directly about the speed signs. Well, not being able to see that the, the young adults or adults that are going for their class five, seeing them slow down to, to a speed limit and then, and then doing the increase at a certain time. So, it's, yeah, I, I've sent an email, got it this afternoon. Remember when I was over and paying some stuff? She said, she was gonna forward it to me, she has. And that was directly given to her from them. So, that, they, they say that's a big issue is not being able to see that the, the people react to the two speeds. So, I totally support the, the movement. If, if it's once every two months, these folks come in and do class five licensing, that, we need that. We need that in Tumbler. I mean, it's hard enough to get a, a class, a class three in Tumbler. We hired new paramedics in town or the fire department brings people on. They need to have certain places classes. I mean, sure, they can travel out of town, but to me, we need to make sure we're trying to support getting all these back in and not losing services in Tumbler Ridge, whether it's driving service or other services that are put on by the government.
Right. Counselor Scott?
We are going to go for the increase though. I do think we should look at where the skate park is and the kids crossing to the community center. So, you know, there'll be another place where they'll have to slow down. But I didn't realize that it was a municipality that, like, if there's a play area, I assumed that would be provincially legislative or is that just something that was over in one set speed?
I don't know, but I, I would have stopped if that was, although if it was thirty there before, before, they may not put the signs up.
And then is this something where we need to talk to the local detachment? Or is this something that just falls on us?
They could just fall on us. Mr. Wall, is that true?
It's, uh, council's decision so long as you're, uh, operating within provincial legislation. I mean, there's other things that we can do. We can look at having somebody draw up a traffic, um, control plan as well, if that's what you're looking for. Um, you can talk to the RCMP if, if you want their input. Those are things you can do as well. But as long as it's within provincial regulation, it is council's power to do what you want from this.
But if we go to fifty, then that signs you gotta go up, right? To thirty, drop to thirty by the playground or by the skate park?
If that's what council wants to do, it's a, it's a playground area. So, I'd have to check on the provincial legislation. If that's considered a playground area and needs to go down to thirty, then we'll put it up and, and reduce it down to thirty.
Right beside it, you got a tennis court and then you got a soccer field. There's no signs there either, so.
I think we're probably okay on that legally, but I'll take a look into it. And if we're not, then, then we make that change. If we are okay legally on it, then what does council want to do? Do you wanna drop that down to thirty even if we're okay legally? Or do you wanna keep it at fifty? What's the?
Well, you know, if, if it affects, um, the training, I can see why having it fifty. Doesn't affect the training.
No, it is, I mean, the opponent is gonna do.
But what do we gotta do here? Is it, I mean, we've gotta vote on it? Just say that we're happy with that?
Uh, if you want us to install the new speed limits, I need the motion to pass tonight. If you don't want to install the speed limits, then I don't, the motion hasn't been made and seconded yet. So, if there's no motion to vote on, you can just continue. And if you wanna wait until you, uh, get more information, you can do that as well. It's, it's up to council where you wanna go.
I'm okay with the fifty on Pioneer Loop and stuff like that. It's just I would like to know the legalities on around the skateboard park and that, that particular area. So, can we?
Well, if it's, if it's provincial legislation, then that's gotta be no speed limit, then it's gonna have to happen.
Yeah.
Which I think brought me in. That's what's, yes. Uh, Counselor.
So, I'll put the motion forward that the District of Tumbler Ridge spend the money to increase the speed limit for Pioneer Loop, North Gate Street and South Gate Street from thirty kilometers an hour to fifty kilometers per hour.
So.
Okay, should we wait for?
I don't know. They could use the.
I got a hose plead. Oh.
Can you vote from there?
You can vote from here, yeah. Yeah, we're not up there.
Do you need a medic? One line one one, we're still to meet, I'm sorry.
I wouldn't hurt to come back in here, Counselor, okay? We don't mind a little blood in here.
That's a hell of a meeting for us.
Sorry about that.
The, the motion is that we, uh, the speed limit's the same as it was, uh, at the P and P. And you heard that, uh?
Yeah, I heard that, that was.
Okay, uh, all in favor? Vote. Counselor's business. Counselor Casey?
Thank you, Worship. I attended the volunteer appreciation day at the Monarch Way. I thought a very good turnout, residents, kids and family members. Had a certainly appeared to be a, a real good time and, uh, the feedback that I received on it was very positive. Uh, attended a personnel committee meeting. We had a good discussion, uh, with recommendations also that were prepared and, uh, presented to council. I attended a council meeting with Kanuma Cole, as I'm sure others did, uh, Resources, and, uh, received an overview of their plans and objectives. This was followed up with an open house as well. Uh, lots of, I thought, very many questions. I was really impressed with the number of people. It seemed to me, I mean, we're, okay, speaking, two hundred, fifty to three hundred people that, that showed up and so forth. First-class question and answer session as well, I thought. Some interesting, uh, interesting comments made in the presentation, not only that we received here at council, but also there was, was very much, very much the same. Uh, also had a conference call with N D I T, uh, meeting that sometimes are held by conference calls. Talked about the two thousand and sixteen approved projects by Northern Development Initiative Trust. Uh, was discussed with Tumbler Ridge. Uh, and just overall, we're looking at the thirty thousand dollars for a community center LED upgrade, uh, which is a grant, a grant writing support and that's eight thousand dollars. And the Love Northern B C, Tumbler Ridge Marketing Initiatives was fifty-three thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. So, it's the substantial amount of money. The T R D Society, the, uh, W N M S, Emperor Challenge, another twenty-five hundred dollars apiece. So, overall, for two thousand and sixteen to date, uh, out of N D I T, amounted to ninety-six thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. And we, we know this and we've talked about it previously. That is a first-class run organization. And in terms of the way that they, uh, have not only dispersed their funds, but in terms of, of banking it, in terms of their income that they get from it, it really is, uh, really is worthwhile. So, that, uh, that pretty much covers the report. Again, N D I T or N D I T was, uh, just a first-class organization. Thank you.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Worship. A little bunch to report. I did, um, make it to a success by six meeting. And I'll be bringing more info, um, back now. Just wanted to give an update in regards to counseling for, for youth and adults that are needing it in Tumbler Ridge. Came up at that meeting how it's lacking. And I know we talked about it last year through the schools and we all thought it was good, myself as well. But when it came up at that meeting, I said to the individuals there that when they're seeing the pitch not working or the fix not working for them, they need to bring it forward sooner. So, she just wants to give me, get, get the right information with the right criteria and stuff so that we got the right information to be able to have staff, maybe contact the right people so we can find out why we're not getting the right counseling for our youth and our adults who are in need. It's, they're doing, uh, block, block counseling at the school and I guess that is normal. So, when they come out for a certain amount of time, a kid gets six weeks or, sorry, a child gets six weeks. That's what we got. I'm gonna bring that forward. The other thing is.
If, if you don't mind, I can, I can talk about that issue.
Sure.
Okay. So, what happened was our original youth counselor, who had been doing it, turns out that wasn't part of her job. Uh, she just did it because she wanted to provide that service to the community. And then when that, when she moved on, needed to be filled, uh, the person came in and told us that that's not her job. Don't do this. And we found, uh, this stopgap measure to basically do it. And we have been fighting with the province. I shouldn't say that. We have been talking with the province and our transition team to get this reinstated, but nor do the council has had the resources to deliver it and even trying to fill the stopgap measures as much as possible. So, this is something that staff have been trying hard to bring it back to. Tumbler Ridge shall not, so we shouldn't, uh, talk about it in any use or something if we can, but it is something we are actively trying to.
That's good to hear, Mr. Wall. I, I'm sorry, I wasn't aware that you guys knew, you knew about it. I know I was unaware.
Yeah.
When I heard about it at the meeting, I was like, because I thought it was all good. We weren't hearing about it. So, thanks for the update. I'll definitely forward it on and I'll get you some proper stats. I guess she's gonna bring me quite the list of, and then that way you'll have some fire, I guess, and maybe Worship through Mr. Bernie or something. And the other thing is, I guess, in a favor to Mr. Wall, there was an A E D installed over at the Willow Hall. So, the senior center, thank you very much. Now, um, we, they were looking at doing, watching a video and I've offered up some, uh, light training on A E D. I just wanna make sure that's okay through this. So, we're gonna have two, two paramedics go over and, and use a demo A E D just to kinda give the seniors a little bit of knowledge on a demo one. So, it'll be the same version pretty much that we have installed there, but they'll understand the use of it. Any issues with the district of us doing that?
You're gonna do it as a, a paramedic or as a counselor?
No, as a volunteer thing.
Then you, yeah, you guys can do, yeah. The, the district doesn't have any, I would say we're not condoning it or stopping you from doing it. It's just a, a matter outside of our.
Do we need to do anything on regard staff to you guys? Like, like, our, so, just myself and Joe Zimmer. So, I guess, I'm not sure if we're allowed to maybe outreach to the other organizations that are using Willow Hall. But it, it's something that we do in, in our community anyways. It is outreach that and, and do some of that training. It's all volunteer and free. So, I'm not sure if we're allowed to have the district contact where we're using the hall and see if they're interested in doing some light training, like, we're not doing a total first aid course, but an overview. So, I'm not sure if we're allowed to do that.
Yeah, we're getting into contacting people who use it. I don't wanna commit to you right now because we're getting into F O I territory there. So, if we're, if we're able, I'll let you know. And if not, you might just have to go, well, I know this group uses it. You might have to just reach out yourself, so.
Okay, good enough. Counselor.
I attended the Fall Fair at the Saddle Club. We had done some improvements there. Um, I remember being in front of council here around that, wanting some help this year. And I guess it's the first, uh, hopefully annual, um, one that's starting up after many, many years of it not happening. And it was beautiful weather, well-attended. Um, got a tour of the chicken coop down there. And, um, there were, um, displays and I, I guess they pulled it together in a, a week and it was, uh, pretty, pretty impressive. And again, I've, um, there's a bunch of organizations that collaborated and there was, uh, it was just a wonderful day. I also bumped into the, um, teacher that runs the goldfish farm at the, the fish farm at the school. And he was, um, talking about, uh, you know, that still, like, in the back of his, uh, mind, he wants to have that trout farm and still sees ways around that. So, uh, this year though, with it being on short notice, schools back in, they're going to stick the goldfish. So, that's something I'm going to be bringing before council again. And I've kind of been investigating on how we can help make that happen because I, I really think Tumbler Ridge is unique and we get those things that complement our school system and the community. And that, I think, is something that we definitely need to have to pursue. Um, and, and Ali Bernie was out and gave a donation and supported that, that fish farm and was intrigued by it. I think he's visited it a couple times. So, I think that's something we need to look at. Um, also attended the, the, or, um, thing, I can't pronounce their name.
Kanuma.
Kanuma. And the open house was very well-attended. There was a lot of excitement and positivity in the community again with some initial jobs coming back. Also, I participated in the, um, conference call regarding the O R V, um, resolution. And there were a few errors in it, um, on old legislation and that. And I think they asked if we did that with friendly withdrawal, um, of the, um, of what council had, had put forward and also get the Peace River Regional District, um, to, to do that. They would work with us to craft, uh, resolution going forward for next year. And they'll notify N C L D A because we have all of those groups in this north area supporting it. But there's some verbiage in it that isn't accurate. And they also want to be able to compile because the regu, regulations just came in last year in November. They want to have that year behind them for stats and data and stuff like that. So, they're trying to, they know it's not gonna be able to work throughout the whole province because the south has other issues, whereas we have much crown land to, for more of these to, to drive on. Down there, it's private land. So, they know they're gonna have to deal with municipalities, you know, big and small and, and different problems. But they just wanna get a, a kind of a year, um, get everybody up to date on what the new act and legislation is before they issue, um, kind of individual municipalities. And then the, the reason too is the basic insurance rate is only twenty-six dollars because they did go out of provincially. So, they don't wanna mess with some of the fees. And in B C, it's one-time registration fee of forty-eight dollars. Um, in the other provinces where people are driving on roads, um, they said it's privatized insurance, like in Alberta, Ontario, and I think down east as well. So, they, there's a huge working group. So, the call was so informative. Um, and it's something they said kind of, like, the municipality and law enforcement could actually pick some streets. They said it's kind of in our hands now. And, and they said they'd be up for a conference call with mayor, C A O, everybody. And those, and the one lady has invited me to meet her down at U B C M. And she said anytime there's questions, they're working with the A T V organization in the world of B C. So, it's, there are gonna be some interesting things for towns that are trying to recruit tourism and, and get those people that are bypassing us and hitting the back country and drawing them in. And it might be as simple as relooking at the map. So, um, I know people aren't happy with the one-way shop, but it is going to be a positive thing. So, that's my report.
Thank you.
Worship, could I ask you a question through Counselor Scott? Uh, you're heavily involved with the Grizzly Valley Saddle Club?
No, I just was invited to go out to the Saddle Club that day. Um, so, I, I just attended the Fall Fair.
But the only reason I'm saying, I was just wondering whether or not there would, if there's ever been any discussion, uh, possibility about having a rodeo that we did at one particular point in time, whether the club is active enough? And so, that, that's why I raised, raised the question
And so that, that's why I raised, raised the question to see if I think about it or it could happen or what would need to be happened. Is it sure was well-attended, but we did have them?
Well, they had some people from, I think, Ubo Lodge, like horse trainers, whatever they're doing, demonstrations, riding ring was set up. So it was pretty neat for the kids.
Okay, thank you.
That's where we need playgrounds.
Well, we had a meeting where with the Community Forest, the Tumbler Ridge Community Forest and during that meeting where it was a lot of, a lot of discussion about the, the upcoming conference in June. And I think that's something we're, we're hosting this year. And in Lake Cowichin last year, there was about two hundred and fifteen delegates there. So it's a, it's a, it's a pretty big event. Looking at trying to mail down some places for hotels, that type thing for meals and facilities that can be utilized throughout the, the three days. And we're also trying to maybe put a, just do something a little different from the, the normal mold. This, that, this has been, that's been taking place up until now. Is that, make it a family event, which has never really been done before. So we, we'd like to start maybe using some of the tourist things that we have for Tumbler Ridge and, and river boating, no camping facilities, the hiking. And we've already talked to, Mr. Kincaid is right on board with this. I mean, that, that facility there will be more than ready for, for that conference when the time comes. Also, we'd like to bring children. We'd like to have children programs set up, that type thing. So there's a lot of work. Done is we, we put out a request for a coordinator. We've had some fantastic candidates. We, we have picked one person. They, not sure if they've been notified yet. So, so we'll just hang on that now. But I mean, this is gonna be, we're hoping this will be a really exciting event. And one of the things are the kind of a spin-off from this is, is an interpretive trail. We like, I think pretty soon there, we're gonna have to bring something in front of council just to maybe work together with council, maybe even as a partnership in, in doing something in development of the area down by the pond and, and get a plan, what we're gonna do with that whole thing in which the Community Forest is definitely willing to work with the district and, and using some of our funds too, to maybe do something down there. But in, in just sort of, if, if you take a walk through there and I had an opportunity to do, do that with our E D O the, the other day, really you're, you're totally just limited by your imagination. There's places down there that you could really set up a, a good grounds for Grizz Fest and power everything right there. It's really doable, a natural hole, you know, you know, we, it's all, it's all, you know, a little bit of a, like I said, you're kind of just limited by your imagination on that. I think that's about it.
Most of the things that I went through have been talked about already. One thing I did, I got a email today from Al Cangis thanking us for our visit to the Co-. And he also mentioned in that email about the talking to C N when we're down at U B C M. And I don't think we have to limit it to talking to just C N. I think we should be talking to every minister that's, the binding minister, the transportation minister. This is, it's kind of bothers me that our rail, that I try to condition that we can't run a train on it now. So I think there should be getting at it right away. And if it affects Tumbler Ridge, I mean, it's foot kind of reek. If you fight like Brady, you hope that the coal mine start up and also now you can't get rid of the coal. I mean, I think, I think it's a big issue and I think we should make it most of it so that U B C M. And it's funny, you know, with the tourism stuff around here. The other day there, I was going in the property and there's some guys on the kayaks. So I went and talked to them. They carry their kayaks down to the Bobo's Creek and then they go down Bobo's to Wolverine and down to the Murray. Trying to think about that. You can go put in a, a Bobo's slats and you could do a kayak. There's a six-foot falls. They, they say they love that stuff. You know, it would, the stuff around here, it's starting to, it comes out with, with the geopark thing. Just, it's gonna be, it's amazing place now, but it's gonna even get better, I think. We need some tourism guy to pick up on stuff like that. Way that goes. And the only other thing I wanted to bring up was Grizz Fest. I didn't know, I don't know, I haven't heard how they did. I'm just wondering if we could write them to our meeting. If we didn't mention that last year, it'd be nice if they could let us know how that you ran. So if we could.
Do I need a motion?
No, they're just waiting for the finals to come and tell me this month and then they know where they stand. And I think the plan is for them to come in at that point.
Be nice to them. Okay, question, answer period. I guess Trent. Good? But they just put on a closed meeting. Get that recommendation? Someone?
Lieutenant? Police?
Is that our most, because if I didn't have to say two, because I have to.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll talk to Thursday.